Only thing, whoa, hot mic. Only thing, Mayor and Council just continued update on the animal shelter. All materials have been submitted to Department of Environmental Quality for this Certificate of Fitness, so hopefully that will come here in the next week to 10 days. That's the update there.
One, two, three. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Councilpeople, good afternoon. My name is Paul Clark. I'm from the South Side Triangle, or South Side, block from South Park. Anyway, it's election tomorrow, you guys. I think that looked pretty good. I saw an awful lot of ads. I won't say whose, but I did see an awful lot, especially during the World Series. I'm not sure what that was all about, but it is what it is. Shock my well. Okay, I did go get an analysis on this groundwater from my backyard where I water with roses and grass. And there, I did have a city came through the alley and they replaced our sewer line along with others on Fifth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, and for two blocks down my alley, I just happened to be the guy. So there was a little bit of bacteria, I think, from that because of them opening up the line, and when you do that, you expose sewage. And so some of that might have got contaminated, but it wasn't a high level. The, uh, they tested for fluoride. Fluoride's a definitely a big problem. Chloroform bacteria, that's the, uh, the bad water. There's a lot of alkalinity and conductivity. And it's, they basically said this is safe for your plants and your yard. Don't apply it to your house. It'll turn brown from apparently alkali and iron. And if you are going to drink the water, boil the water, which brings me back to the days of being a Boy Scout. That's what we were told out of a creek in the 60s. Anyway, um, the next thing I want to bring up is Western Sugar. I'm trying to find information as much as I can. They want to be good neighbors. We maybe, as in a suggestion, maybe we can bring someone in from Western Sugar and tell us what good community neighbors they might want to, uh, be. Uh, I noticed that Phillips 66 down in that area have done such a thing, and they have gracious, graciously donated the gazebo and a lot of other issues down there at the park. Again, going back to Western Sugar, uh, from the year 2000, they have been in violation for several different reasons, close to finding them around $2 million. Uh, one of the things were hazardous, like the combustible dust that they use for their power, also the limestone, the leaching pond in the back that the city wanted to put the Yellowstone Valley Animal Shelter back there. I still believe that water is very contaminated, and I will stand to this day until proven otherwise. I can't prove it. I can only tell you what's in my backyard. But a thousand feet away sits since 1909, a very wasteful sight. How am I doing? I'm gonna have to come back up later. Uh, street lamps, for some reason, down on the South Side Triangle. Again, we tried to bring this up. I brought it up with the people. Uh, it stops. Now, I have a porch light, yes, but do I need a porch light to shine for light? Or can the city do something like that? Again, these are things I'll keep bringing up, you guys. It's all good. I'm gonna stop there and I'll come back later. Blessings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, come before you this evening to, um, advocate on behalf of an item that's in the CIP, the draft CIP, that you'll be, um, looking at in a little bit. I'm, um, talking about a mixed-use path, separated mixed-use path along North 27th Street. You're probably aware that a path currently exists on the south side of the guardrail. I'm not sure how many of you have been on that path, but it's, um, it's pretty primitive. Call it a goat path, but it's well-worn. And, um, you probably also know that North 27th Street was extended from downtown to the rims back in 1927, when the new airport was opening up. And I don't know how long that dirt path has been there on the south side of the guardrail, but I bet you it's been there almost as long. And, um, for some reason, it's never been officially recognized as part of our trail system. So one of the things I'd like to ask is that we at least consider including it as part of the, uh, the heritage trail system. I've made it my personal mission to take my litter bag and collect litter whenever I go up there, and I usually get a pretty good haul of McDonald's wrappers and beer cans and that sort of thing. But, um, that's to say that a lot of people use that trail, and even in its primitive form. The other thing I've been doing in my retirement years is riding my bicycle up North 27th Street. And again, you probably know there's a fairly wide shoulder in places, but then in other places, it, it narrows up quite a bit, and so I'm essentially competing with cars going 45 or 50 miles an hour. My wife thinks I'm crazy, but that's how I like to get up to the rims. So all that's to say, I think we can do better. Um, it's my hope that when North 27th Street celebrates its 100th birthday in 2027, we can at least have a definitive plan on how to create a separated path that will allow our citizens, students from MSU Billings, people from the hospitals, medical corridor, visitors to downtown, our whole community, enjoy a trip up and down from downtown to the rims. Thank you so much. Steve Shon, I'm so sorry. I've even got it in my notes. Steve Chandra, 1109 North 31st Street. Thanks.
I'll, I will keep it brief, Mayor and Council. What I wanted to touch on, three brief things. First, you saw the correction from Andy today. Our apologies, the total number in the memo in the packet was correct, the total number being 34.71 mils. That's the difference in total mils as a result of Senate Bill 231. And then, um, I wanted to just touch on basically looking for policy direction ultimately from, from the body in two specific areas. A, are you going to, um, define how that 34.71 and/or future mils go under House Bill 231? And if you make the decision to go that way, if you want that in the form of a resolution or an ordinance? And really that simple. I'll turn it over to Tom. It's his initiative, so we'll go from there. There, I, I, your light's on. Yeah, just keep your mouth close to it and...
There we go. Thank you. All right, so thank you, Chris. Um, and like Chris, I, I will keep it brief. I think this is a pretty straightforward, uh, change. I said last time, I didn't think it was very controversial, but, um, happy to talk about it, you know, as, as long as we want to, to sit here talking about it. Uh, I, I think as we went through our, our budget discussion this year, as we were trying to figure out how to, uh, deal with this, um, gift that the legislature gave us, uh, there was some confusion on, you know, what we can and, and how we should approach these mils in, in future years. If it was really a lump sum of 34.71 mils that we can use for any purposes, uh, council may see fit, uh, or if those should be aligned with, uh, in general proportion to our voter-approved mill levies, uh, that we passed over the last 20 years or so. I'm, I'm strongly of the belief that the, the legislature did not give us, uh, have the intention of giving us a, a blank check for extra set of mils. Uh, voters here have passed certain levies, and I think we, uh, should, should respect those decisions, even if the account, if the legislature did something that, um, was against those. I think we should, should stick to voter intentions as closely as possible as we implement these. So what I would like to see is, um, s- some official documentation that says, these are how those mills should be approached. That we have passed mills specifically to support the library. We have passed mills specifically to support transit. We have passed mills specifically for public safety, uh, purposes. And, and across the three different public safety mills in different, slightly different wording and, and purposes across those three mills. Uh, so I think it's important to, to stick to those, and I think we should, uh, put it in city code, um, that those mills are, will be adjusted proportionally. There, um, we went through those, uh, this year in the table that has been sent out and, uh, the corrected documents. We should see exactly how many, uh, mils each of those levies should raise, uh, up to in the, in future years. Doesn't mean we have to, in, in most cases, assess those many mils. If we only need five mils for, for the library and don't want to do five points of eight four or eight six, then that's okay. We can raise only five. That's what our MOU with the county says, and maybe that's all we should do. But I, I think we should, uh, pass this and, uh, set those out, so there's no, uh, really confusion with future councils as to how these, uh, mills should be addressed. Uh, as far as the ordinance versus a resolution, um, you know, second, uh, thing that, that Chris brought up there, uh, personally, I'd like to see it in an ordinance. If we put it in a resolution, then it can be overwritten with a single vote, um, through the very act that we have to do of passing next year's budget resolution. That doesn't really give anybody, I think, any, uh, confidence that, uh, we're going to, um, kind of stick to, to voter intention here with, uh, the relative proportion of the, the different levies that have been passed over the years. So, um, I think, uh, an ordinance certainly has a higher hurdle. Council will have to, through, uh, multiple meetings, uh, you know, strike that down. Um, the, the passage of next year's budget resolution can't just override what, what we say here. So, um, I'd like to see it in a ordinance. Um, if there are other options, I'm certainly open to them. With that, I will yield the floor and happy to answer any questions or participate in whatever discussion Council would like to do. Yeah, absolutely. I, I think, let's see how the, uh, conversation goes, and I do think we should, uh, take a vote and give, uh, staff direction on bringing back, in, in my preference, an ordinance, uh, wherever we go with that, uh, that's fine. Let's, let's just see where the conversation goes, but I'm happy to introduce, uh, a, a motion, um, to either, uh, up or down and, and move on, uh, whenever the time is right.
I think we've talked about this enough. I think we should just vote on it. Seriously, we, we, I don't want it to beat us to death. We've talked about this for some time, so I would encourage us to put on it.
I likewise don't want to beat this to death, just want to offer the countervailing point. I'm sure everybody's heard me, but just to offer it up. I think this, um, proposal is simply laying the groundwork for future tax increases. Um, I do not agree that we can interpret either legislative intent or voter intent from what was done in HB 231. It was a bad bill that was poorly drafted. Many people have gotten tax relief. They saw their tax statements come in this weekend, and that's great. Many more people who are renting saw shock. Uh, we know energy prices are going up. This provision, this particular one, that took voter intent, as expressed in our charter, and blew a hole right into it, I think is poorly crafted. It is open to interpretation and ambiguous. And in a circumstance where the legislature has given us something ambiguous, I think we have an obligation to interpret it in a way that isn't in the best interest of our constituents, and that is avoiding future tax increases. If we lock this in an ordinance, we lose our discretion. Pretending that characterizing the way revenues are raised is budget transparency is misleading. It is the budget itself that provides that transparency. It is our decision to openly debate and set priorities in the budget resolution every year that allows us to tell voters how we are stewarding their dollars. This ordinance would tie our hands unnecessarily. It would put dollars in accounts that, because of good stewardship, are frankly doing quite well, and put us in a position of then having to lower levies in some categories, which is great, but then go to the taxpayers and ask for tax increases in other categories, which is unnecessary and preventable. I also think we continue to see many legislators debate the longevity of HB 231. We have a legislative session coming up, and we don't know what Helena is going to do, and quite frankly, we should be at the table, talking about a better provision, a better structure that serves the city of Billings. So I think this ordinance, for that reason, is also premature. We have a budget process every year. It is open. We debate it. We tell voters exactly how much will be levied and exactly for what purposes. All this does is tie our hands and lay the ground for future tax increases. So my recommendation tonight would be that we vote to tell staff to take no further action. We've done a budget. We've allocated it for this year. We will do a budget next year, and we will allocate it for next year.
Councilmember Rupesas, can I ask you to, to comment on that specifically? Is the intent of the ordinance to lock in those, uh, relative values to the maximum, uh, or is there discretion to, uh, levy less than? Uh, are these numbers essentially a cap?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Obviously, no. Um, I'm not actually sure where that comes from. Nothing in this locks us, uh, nothing in this proposal locks us into levying anything. That's completely made up and completely absurd. So I'm not sure where she got it, but, um, it says, uh, very specifically, um, in, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was on the, I, um, in E, that says if, uh, oh, wait a minute, no, that's not, where did we, I'm sorry, Gina, where was, um...
I, I thought I had seen something, in fact, that it, yeah, there's not a requirement...
It said, it said there were permissive and, and up to, but not requiring any of these. And I'm sorry, I'm just blanking on the...
Councilmember Rupesas doesn't need to find it because the point is being misunderstood.
Let's just, let's just ask them to point to us, and then we'll, we'll give Councilmember Owen a chance to respond, but it, because I, we should look at the specific language we were talking about.
Oh, yeah. It, it, I was at the right, yeah. It says, in subsection E, it says if the election, city elects to transition to a dollar-based mill levy, blah, blah, blah. Uh, if it does not elect this option, then after fiscal year 2026, these additional mills are permissive, not mandatory. If not fully levered in any year, the city may lever them fully in future years. Nobody is locking anything in. Councilmember Owens', um, implication that we can use transit or library mills to avoid future levies for public safety, um, is, is, well, um, it, it, it's an interesting, uh, approach, uh, but it's not one that, you know, I, I think the, the legislature or voters would ever say is consistent with passing levies through the system. And yes, I don't like what the legislature did either. But the fact that we have passed these levies and the legislature increased those mill dollars to stay consistent with this, this year's or last year's, uh, you know, budget dollar or levy dollar amounts, um, does not mean that we can take future years and use it for purposes that the voters didn't, uh, didn't pass. Um, it's, it's simply unheard of. Um, it's not what it, um, this, this, uh, language does. And it's, it's, it's a false, um, conclusion, uh, for where this would let us go.
Oh, okay, thank you. It'll give Councilmember Owen a chance to respond, but just clarify then, uh, the last sentence of paragraph E, your goal anyway, is to create, just like our charter works now, put in words in your mouth, but asking if this is correct, um, uh, a, a cap on each of those categories, but you would still, you couldn't allocate across categories. You couldn't take, uh, these extra mills that are dedicated for public safety and put it toward the library, for example?
That's exactly, that's exactly right.
Okay, it's basically the way our charter works now.
That's exactly the way our, are consistent with the way our current charter works.
Okay, Councilmember Owen, you under...
Yeah, I sure do, Mayor, because I think we're, we're, uh, making a lot of inferences here that don't have evidence. There is no voter intent in HB 231, so we are implying it where it doesn't exist. What the voters intended is what is, is what is in our charter, and the legislature quite expressly overrode that. The direction in 231 is simply to raise the same amount of revenue. The bill says nothing about per category or how we are to do it, other than we are to raise revenues. Is that a poorly drafted provision? Yes. Does it allow Councilmember Rupesas's interpretation? Yes. But it also allows an interpretation of simply raising revenues and allocating them through the budget process like we always do. So if we follow the ordinance that is ahead of us tonight, we will make things into transit, library, and public safety levies where the law does not require us to do so, which means in subsequent years, we could go up or down. That is correct. But we could not allocate according to community priorities. So as we sit here tonight with an open police union contract and a fire union contract on the horizon, we need to prepare, be prepared to respond to the needs of our first responders. And instead, we are going to lock it into, to departments that are stewarding their dollars well, are not in need of additional revenues, and then be in the situation of having to go to the taxpayers and ask for a tax increase in public safety or other funds. I think this is an unnecessary interpretation that is too harsh and doesn't accomplish any more transparency. Transparency comes in the budgeting process, not in the levying process.
Okay, um, for the discussion, Councilmember Kenny, Councilmember Neese?
Uh, Councilmember Neese? Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Gina, uh, you've heard the, the discussion. There's two interpretations of the law. Is, is, uh, what is, what is, uh, your opinion on the fact that these can be interpreted both ways? Is that, is that a accurate, um, portrayal of how this law could be interpreted because it was not clear?
Uh, Councilmember Neese, I think, could I just ask for you to clarify a little bit more? When you say the law, you're referring to House Bill 231?
231, yes.
When you say, could that be interpreted both two ways? So...
So two ways being one, where the intent of the bill is to raise funds per category, raise what you raised in 2025 per category, or, as Councilmember Owen is saying, raise, uh, raise the revenue that you raised in 2025 with no indication that it should go towards any category?
My reading of 231 is that it requires local governments with a cap, in a charter cap, to levy the number, well, I guess the best way I can do it is, is read the pertinent section, which levy the number of mills in fiscal year 26, um, and subsequent tax years that will generate the same amount of property taxes that was levied in fiscal year 25. Um, I think that provision is clear. As, as to future years, I think that there, 231 has an option where that you, that a local government can then elect to transition to 1510420, which is the formula other, almost other, almost all other cities use. And that is, Andy can explain how that one works a little bit better than I can, um, but if that's not elected, then there would essentially then be a cap. And how it is, how those are allocated is not dictated by 231. Uh, how the mills are allocated to different programs and funds, is that's not dictated in 231, if that's the question.
Uh, I think, I'm sorry. I, I'll say thank you because I, I don't think that clarified what I was asking, but I will let Councilmember Kenny go forward.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I would like to follow up on, uh, what Councilman Wayette said, that we go ahead. We've spent enough time on this to move forward and just vote up or down if you want it to go forward.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? I was asking a question before. I, I support this because, uh, I agree with Councilmember Owen, I agree with Councilmember Rupesas. The, the law is not clear. It's not a question what we must do, in this case, it's a question of what we should do. And in our charter, it, the voters determine a relative allocation of value between these four or five categories. And if we do not respect that, we are, uh, acting inconsistent with the intent of the voters as expressed in the charter, not as expressed by the legislature. I agree, they don't, they didn't have a clue what the impacts of this are gonna be, but, um, because I think this is what we should do, that's, I'll vote for this. But is there any other discussion before we proceed to a vote? Because that would be the logical next thing. Or I, pardon, a motion, yeah, we'll have to ask Councilmember Rupesas for his motion. Um, uh, Councilmember Neese?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I just, just to clarify, our, our Billings legislators did understand what was gonna happen, and that, so they did a very good job for us up there, trying to protect us from that.
And, and generally, I'd have to agree with you. I don't know that, uh, they appreciated, or we even appreciated, this issue of then the, the next step, the unintended consequences of these so-called extra mills, so, okay, very good. Or, or if we'll, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Rupesas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion that, um, we direct staff to bring back the ordinance, uh, for our consideration at the next available business meeting.
Okay, is there a second? It's answered by Councilmember Shaw. Uh, now, any further discussion on the motion? Now we proceed to a vote. If in favor of the motion made by Councilmember Rupesas, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Um, the nays have it, but for the record, count, uh, voting in favor were Councilmembers Rupesas, Cole, uh, Gulick, and Shaw, any other council members? Um, all other council members present then voting in opposition. So, um, that resolves item number one, brings us then to item number two, um, uh, fiscal year 2027 TRP, Technology Replacement Plan. And, um, uh, Chris, is Jeff or...
Yes. Yes, if you'll give us just a minute here, I'm gonna let Jeff and Damon are both gonna come up. I'm gonna slide over and move next to, no, actually Gina's gonna go. You guys wanna take the corner there? That way you've got two seats next to each other? Thanks, Gina, sorry. And, uh, you guys know Jeff. Jeff's not new to the organization, but he is new to his role. He's been our interim, uh, IT Director, but he is now our permanent, uh, IT Director going forward. So, uh, Jeff Sprock to, here to my right, and then Damon, the two of them are gonna tag-team the presentation. I am just gonna start with, with Jeff, and he and, uh, he and Damon will pass it back and forth as we look at the Technology Replacement Plan. So as they're setting up, I'll just remind folks, so, uh, later tonight, next up is a Capital Improvement Plan. At our next work session, we'll have the Equipment Replacement Plan. So there's really three of these kind of capital improvement plans, uh, technology, equipment, and overall CIP. Tonight, you've got two of the three, uh, two weeks from tonight, you'll also have two of the three, but they will be the ERP and the CIP follow-up from tonight.
Very good, thank you. If it doesn't work, you can put the first item on the Technology Replacement Plan and new laptop, if that will help you.
Am I on?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So, good evening, Council. Tonight, we're presenting the, uh, City's Technology Replacement Plan. Uh, this plan represents, uh, just a disciplined, forward-looking approach, uh, to maintaining reliable and secure technology across the city's operations. It focuses on replacing critical systems already in use. Those are computers, network infrastructure, lab instruments, uh, communication systems before they come, become a risk, uh, to services and delivery. Uh, with me today... Uh, with me today, I have the I, IT Application Manager, Damon Combs, uh, who worked with the committee, uh, developing the TRP this year, um, and last year. All right, for our committee, the Technology Replacement Committee brings together ten representatives from across the organization. Each is responsible for specific operational areas. Uh, these members evaluate requests, confirm assets, uh, have reached ass, end of life, and ensure replacements are justified, uh, by safe compliance, uh, or service delivery needs. IT coordinates the process, uh, ensuring citywide alignment, cost predictability, and timing, while each department provides operational, uh, expertise and justification. Sorry, I'm having to navigate multiple systems here. Uh, the Technology Replacement Plan provides structured and predictable mechanism to replace aging and unsupported, uh, systems before they fail. Uh, this focuses on reliability, ensuring systems essential to the public service, such as lab, lab instruments, data servers, uh, and phones are proactively refreshed. Funding remains, uh, within the department's budgets, reinforcing accountability and ensuring replacements that are aligned with each division's, uh, operations and priorities. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Damon and talk a little bit about, uh, what we're doing with the.
This year's replacements are really about giving people the right tools to work today. We're refreshing sixty-three office PCs, but we're also adding more laptops, sixty-two in total. So staff can stay mobile and productive wherever they are. We're updating tablets, network switches, and a few servers to keep everything running smoothly and securely. We're also updating specialized systems that keep our operations running smoothly. That includes new lab equipment for, to support accurate water quality testing. We're replacing our sand storage system and the Mitel phone system to keep communications seamless across departments.
But what happens to equipment as it ages? Um, we, we have a, a hand-me-down system here within, um, the, uh, the TRP that allows us to move technology, uh, throughout, um, the organization. Reallocated equipment supports lower, uh, use environments such as kiosks, community centers, volunteer, volunteer workstations, and temporary or shared spaces. The strategy reduces waste, stretches departmental budgets, and ensures new equipment is directed towards mission-critical needs like public safety and infrastructure systems. Uh, every redeployment is evaluated, uh, for reliability, suitability, and ensured continued security and performance, uh, for its intended use.
So bringing this all together, here's the financial picture for this replacement cycle. The total investment is just over a million dollars with about fifty-six percent capital expenses and forty-four percent O and M expenses. The balance shows we're being intentional, investing where we need new equipment, while also taking care of the systems that are still serving us well. It's a balanced approach that supports both reliability and long-term value. Looking at where those dollars go, the investment is spread across nearly every department. IT carries the largest share because of the citywide technology upgrades, but Public Works, Police, and the Library also have sizable replacements. Overall, it's a plan that supports every part of the organization.
This slide, uh, this slide shows the city is consistent, uh, in managing its technology replacements over time. Uh, in twenty twenty-five, we see a peak of one point three eight million dollars. It dropped down to nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in two, two, twenty twenty-six. This year holds steady at one point zero three, uh, million dollars. Our goal remains to be predictable in cost regulation, avoiding, avoiding large swings where, uh, while ensuring assets are refreshed, uh, uh, before a risk or failure. The, uh, the level of consistency reflects disciplined planning, strong governance, and cross-departmental coordination, um, from year to year. Looking forward, uh, the Technology Replacement Plan remains steady at about one million dollar in most, one million dollars in most years, demonstrating stability, uh, and sustainability. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five shows a projected spike due to several major replacements, including public safety radios, enterprise modernization in our, uh, software system, and key transit and airport systems. Many of these investments can be phased out over, uh, uh, or aligned with grant opportunities, allowing us to manage, uh, timing and minimizing fiscal impact. Essentially, what I'm saying is, uh, many of these, uh, costs in twenty twenty-eight can be spread over twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty, so that spike will be worked through with, uh, the, the rest of the committee as we look at, uh, the twenty twenty-eight TRP. I just wanna say thank you to the Council for your continued engagement in this process. Uh, your support allows us to plan strategically, avoid reactionary spending, and ensure the city's technology environment, uh, remains secure and dependable. This work session helps us align priorities, address potential risks, uh, and maintain transparency in the technology dollars, dollars and how they're allocated. We appreciate your partners i- in sustaining reliability, uh, and have a solid technology foundation for our staff, residents, and the future, uh, of the city of buildings. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, Council, we'll turn it to you with, uh, questions. Councilmember Kennedy?
Jeff, looking at this in every department, it's critical that they have the technology and everything. This covers it, and we should be good over the next year?
That's correct.
With what you proposed?
That's correct. We sit down, or Damon has sat down with, um, the different departments. We have what's called Asset Tiger, which goes through and looks at all of the, the different, um, technology that we need to replace. They go through that, that technology inventory and decide what needs to be purchased each year. So each department ha- has worked with Damon, um, to say this is what we need here in fiscal twenty twenty-seven to be successful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Jeff, you and I spoke on the phone a little bit about some of this and my questions that I had. Uh, one of the things I don't think we talked about was, uh, the O and M. I told you I didn't have my email in front of me, I was working. Um, and so, uh, the O and M on that, it does it, how, how much is it? How much is a swing from year to year when, for instance, in a couple of years, when it's gonna go up for the radios and stuff like that? Is, is the O and M gonna, is, is that stay pretty consistent year over year?
The O and M is fairly consistent. It really depends on the number of, um, lab, laptops, tablets, um, and PCs that we, uh, purchase from year to year. Um, most of the O and M is all the purchases under ten thousand dollars. So generally, what you're seeing there are, are the computers that need to be replaced for each, each department. So i- i- it's fairly consistent, um, uh, but it, it will change from time to time. Like this year, we have a lot of library, uh, computers for, I, I would, you'd have to talk to the library, but I would guess for like the public use for computer labs.
Oh, I see. So if it's, if it's under ten thousand dollars, rather than have an itemized item, we just throw it into O and M, and that's, that's, that's done. And, and this is where you will maybe use, utilize some of these ones that are being replaced, and maybe put them to other departments?
Yes, yes. So, for instance, if you have a, like a high-powered GIS computer, um, that's not keeping up, like with a graphics card, we may replace that early, but give it to another department where that would be suitable, suitable to use.
Great, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind sharing with some of the things as far as what we may be able to see on some of these larger item replacement, how we can, uh, know how these dollars are being spent better and things like that, that you and I talked about.
So you want me to talk about, uh, the capital expenses, uh, and that we talked about?
Yeah, mainly just the capital ones we talked about.
Sure. So, um, uh, Councilman Neese and I discussed, um, what, what is the criteria? What are we looking at for replacing these high-dollar items? So I'll just go through item by item and let you know what's going on. So in, in the Public Works, they have a conference media area, um, it's a smart board, and that technology is at the end of, uh, end of life. And so we're, they're gonna be replacing that, uh, over at the, um, Bellnap Conference Room. Um, so we worked with Amanda to look at that replacement. That's, uh, a four-to-ten-year, uh, lifespan, and, and they're ready to replace that. Uh, it was, uh, originally purchased in twenty twenty-one. Uh, they have a mail opener that, uh, um, uh, is scheduled to be replaced every five years. In talking to Amanda, um, they've had some, uh, pretty significant issues, uh, with that, and have decided to replace that mail. They, they've deferred that, that purchase, uh, for a couple of years and decided to move forward with that. With their leak detector, they've been having some, um, battery issues. Is this the type of information you're looking for?
Yeah, and, 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 no, that's a little more detail and granular, I think, that we need to get into. But as far as, is, is this the idea that, um, that the information, uh, as far as what's being replaced, why it's being replaced, like you mentioned just a little bit, that you're having trouble with one of these? I forget what it was you said they're having trouble with, and that's why they're replacing it?
Yes.
So that we know we're just not, because it's end of life, we're just not going out and buying new, new equipment, even though it's, it's perfectly good. But the city's actually taking, taking care of, studying these things, hearing from the employees that say, no, this is not working. It's impacting our job. We can't get our job done without having this replaced. And so that's why it's either being replaced sometimes early, sometimes later, but it's, it's, they're, this, with this committee you have doing, you're doing a lot of the, uh, background to understand that these things really are doing well, uh, and we're not just, uh, spending money without a need.
But yes, so the only thing that, that, that is presented in the capital expenses that's really at the beginning of the replacement cycle, um, is, um, the, one of the servers, uh, for the SCADA system. And that's not a system that you want to, um, uh, delay replacement on. So, um, being, uh, active and replacing that, that early on, um, in it, in its end-of-life cycle is really important to protect the security of tho- those critical operations.
Right, and that's a really good reason that why you would do that, is because it's a high risk. And we want, we don't wanna take that chance of having the city down because of the system's not working. So having that information, knowledge as far as, instead of just saying, well, we're replacing it, not understanding what we're doing, why we're doing it so soon in the cycle versus something else that's maybe two or three years outside the cycle would be helpful, uh, when we read what's being replaced.
Yep.
I think, I think you, the way you put it when we were talking on the phone is kinda show your, show your, show, show your math.
Show your math.
Right?
Yep, and, and we did that here. Uh, we have an updated version of the capital expenditures document that was in the council memo, attached to the council memo. We have copies for you if you want that. It, it's got the granular information that I was giving.
Good, thank you. Uh, Councilor Aspilala has a question, but I should have, uh, just clarified at the beginning here. My assumption here, Council, is if, if there are no motions to change the existing document, that becomes the default, and you'll see that, uh, in any future work sessions and in any, uh, uh, final approval, that we're not gonna need a motion to advance this. So, anyway, that's, that's my expectation. Councilor Aspilala?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, Jeff, the, the only question I had, and then I'm, I'm ready to move on to the next item, is in your look forward, and unless I missed this when I stepped out for a quick second, you were pretty consistently in your projections through twenty. Kevin's ready to move on, too. All right, let's move on. Uh, it, we're pretty consistent around a million dollars, plus or minus, except for twenty twenty-eight, in which we're at almost three million. What's the three million? Yeah.
Test, test, all right. So it, it's, um, yeah, it's the public safety radios. I wanna say it's around four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in cost there. That's the beginning of their end of life, so they may wanna push that back into twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. So, uh, again, as we assess the TRP and look at it next, where that may be a cost that's pushed forward into the future. There are a couple of things for software replacements, uh, where we've been looking at, at doing software replacement for, uh, a, a couple of different applications, the financials and, and public safety that are in there as well. Those are, are just placeholders for those at this point, and we will evaluate that software and see if we wanna make that change, um, in, in fiscal year twenty twenty-eight.
I, just a comment, then, then I'm done. I would encourage you to, to figure that out. I mean, there's no way that it makes sense for us to stack all that stuff in the same year. I understand that it just happens to kinda coincide, but we also just can't do it that way. So we gotta get creative. If we've got three years to get, to get there from here, we got a year to figure out how we're gonna start staging that stuff and, and spreading it across, 'cause three million, you're tripling our, our budget in one year is, is not something that's, that's prudent or, or responsible, I, I don't think. And I, I have all the confidence in the world you and, you and your team will do that, but I just encourage you to, to make sure that we get on that and, and we level that thing out at least over a three-year period.
Great comment, and I agree. We will be working on it.
I just have two, two quick questions for you, sorry. Um, I know we're talking about hardware tonight, but I assume we're planning hardware in conjunction with planned significant software conversions. I know we're looking at a significant one in Police. I don't know if that means server upgrades, but I just wanna make sure that this is happening in connection with some of the large planned software upgrades.
Absolutely, yes. Um, that's what some of those placeholders are in, in twenty twenty-eight.
I see, okay, that helps me understand better. And then this actually has nothing to do with the topic in front of us, which I know is real popular, but give us just quick thirty seconds. Are we beginning work on planning, developing an AI strategy for the community? Um, for doing, you know, skilling for our staff, thinking about what that might mean for automation inside of our operations?
That's, uh, uh, that's a great question, Councilwoman Owen. Uh, we are doing that. We recently, uh, um, uh, approved a new IT policy, so Chris had an administrative order on that. That includes an AI policy for the city. Um, uh, several of us within the IT team have been ti- testing generative AI, so looking at Copilot, looking at ChatGPT, and seeing, uh, what's available. We've been reviewing that with Gina, uh, and her team, uh, to see the legal ramifications, uh, of generative AI. We've also been looking at something called Agentic AI, uh, which is where you can build, um, AI that would answer your questions. So if you had questions about the policy manual or questions about city ordinances, you could ask that bot, and it could re- return questions. So we've been looking at, at those, and, and that's one of the, the, um, things that are in our budget narrative about things we wanna pursue in the future.
Oh, fantastic, that's great. Thank you for sharing that. If there's a chance for you to come present in a little more detail before budget season, I'd love to hear where your plan is, but if we have to wait until budget time, that's okay, too.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I understand you've got certain placeholders in fiscal year twenty-eight. We appreciate that kinda planning. Uh, but a couple of years ago, we were, uh, surprised by the cost of our, um, radio conversion, about ten million dollars. Um, that hurt. Um, I, obviously, you don't know what you don't know, but are there some things that are not built into the system that could pop up that, uh, you just wanna mention in general?
Um, the biggest thing that keeps me up at night is, um, the bad actors that, that are out there coming after cities, um, uh, local governments, state governments, and the federal government. We have, um, nation-states across the world, um, that want access to our things like our SCADA systems, and just making sure that we have cybersecurity prac- practices in place to protect, um, our key infrastructure and our, and our key data, uh, and, and keep our, our protected information protected. Uh, we have an excellent, uh, security officer who keeps us, um, looking at all of the standards, whether it's CISA, or NIST, or, um, the CGIS standards, and, and we've been working on getting our policy manual, um, uh, rearranged so that, that, that we continue to, um, stay on top of cybersecurity. And the biggest threat to all of that is, um, between the years, it's us just making sure that we stay educated on that. And so one of the things that, uh, David and I talked about was, um, potentially using a work session like this to just talk about cybersecurity with all of you, and instead of having you go through the, the monthly cybersecurity videos that we all do, uh, um, just talk about the best practices for cybersecurity as you're using your tablets and, and laptops and those devices.
I listened to my login phishing video today, so I was just, but, um, are, are, I, I think we all agree. We all understand, we've all read those terrible, uh, horrific stories about what's, that's cost some cities. You feel like the, the TRP now, um, adequate reflects the kind of, uh, at least hardware, um, investment we should be making for cybersecurity, because if you're not comfortable and you think we should be, uh, investing more heavily in that, then I suspect you would get a positive, uh, response here.
David has done a fantastic job in investing in cybersecurity, and so we are in a great place with that. Uh, we're in the middle right now, towards the end, actually, uh, of a cybersecurity, security audit, uh, with a firm called FR Secure, um, and we've been doing a lot of changes, um, based on that. So I'm very comfortable with where we're at. Um, most of those investments come through the O and M side of things, where we're already invested in, um, uh, softwares that I won't put them out in the, in the, in the, uh, uh, the web space or whatever, but we're invested in significant softwares and companies that, that help protect us. And, and we're, we're meeting with, uh, communities across Montana, um, to, uh, see what they're doing and, and, and work together, uh, to protect ourselves.
Very good. Thank you. City Minister?
Mayor and counsel, just a piece I'd add, and, and it'll, I'll repeat this, especially when we get to the equipment replacement plan. What, what we have seen on the public, if it's got public safety attached to it, surprise, the prices have doubled in many cases for equipment, and I don't think that's going to be limited to just fire trucks. But that's what we're seeing, and we're actually seeing some cities out there litigate with manufacturers over how can it be possible that things are going up in costs this much? Our, you know, how are companies working with each other? So my point here is, you mentioned radios. We were shocked when, you know, the equip, the replacement of the radio system, I think, was in the ten million dollar range, when I think the previous system replacements some decade earlier were far less than half that number. So it does make me nervous as we think about replacements five, seven, ten years out of systems as to what that ends up looking like for us. But I think as, I'm confident that as Jeff and Damon continue to work together, and he's in his new role that he's literally been in for weeks, that next year it'll be all the more robust in how confident Jeff and Damon and their team is as to what we should be doing long term, and so.
Very good. Anything else from counsel before I open up for a public comment? Councilor Boyet?
I just want to say, Jeff, thank you for being part of the team. Now, how are you doing? Just, are you doing okay? You've only been here a few weeks, so are you doing okay?
I'm doing good. Yeah. Um, and one of the reasons I'm doing well uh, is because I'm blessed with such a fantastic staff. Uh, we really have very smart people working in the IT department, uh, working on public safety, working on the application teams with uh, with Damon in cybersecurity and our network, and, and it's just a pleasure to get to, to lead and work with those folks.
Very good. Uh, I don't see anything else from uh, staff or, or the council, so I'll uh, just open for public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on item number two? Item number two, our technology replacement plan. No one is coming to the podium, uh, so we'll close the public comment period. Um, and uh, counsel, I, if there's nothing further on this, I need to apologize to the counsel and to the uh, uh, public. I completely skipped public comment on item number one. We were so focused on getting a motion and getting a vote. I simply uh, uh, skipped over that. Obviously, we've already had our vote, so uh, public comment is questionable. But I do want to give an opportunity. There's the theoretical possibility of a motion for reconsideration. If there was anybody who did come who wanted to speak to item number one, this will be your opportunity. And I apologize for not allowing for that earlier. We had an early comment, uh, public comment period, but I specifically said we'd have public comment on each item, so apologize. Go ahead.
I'll talk loud. How's that?
Uh, yeah, well, that's better than nothing, but it best is if we can actually just turn it on.
There we go. I think it is.
Done?
Yep.
We're picking them up.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm not gonna get too close to that. I'll probably end up eating it. George Richards, that's R I C H A R D S. I live at eighteen twenty four Bannock. Uh, just for record, I am a city, a Billings employee. I've been with the Billings Fire Department for roughly twenty years. And prior to that, I was a airport airfield maintenance worker for four. But I'm not here representing the fire department. I'm not speaking on behalf of the fire chief or fire administration. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the city of Billings. I'm speaking on as my role as the president of firefighters of the state of Montana, roughly about fourteen hundred firefighters. And why it's important is House Bill two thirty one. Crappy bill. We've talked about it. I spent forty seven days up at the legislature, on my days off, back and forth, working bills. And that was probably one of fifteen bills that we were looking at. That doesn't even, it's not even counting the bills that came after just levies, restricting just levies, especially public safety ones. And when that bill came forward and came to the floor, the comment was made from a person who the representative that introduced it on the floor didn't even realize the city of Billings was a charter form of government. Because that bill didn't even recognize charter form of government. And it doesn't just include Sunburst, the city of Billings. It's got effects on like Central Valley, Belgrade area. And so when we looked at it as firefighters, there's, there's five, I have five lobbyists that work for us as firefighters. And they're firefighters. We don't hire them. They're just firefighters that volunteer to go up there on their days off to represent firefighters across the state. And I serve as their president, and I spend my time up there too. And so the city didn't come to us to lobby this bill. Nobody from the city came and asked us to speak on it. We took it upon ourselves to investigate it and see what the effects of this bill was going to do to the city of Billings. And looking at twenty eight firefighters and I don't know how many cops, well, in the thirties probably. And we busted our tail to get those amendments on that bill. We knew it was going to be the bill that went through because it was the second floor's bill. The governor wanted this bill. It was his bill. And that's the facts. But we knew if we're going to get it, we had to get those amendments on it because it was going to affect it. And to speak to Councilwoman Owen's point, is there, there was no language that said that you had to use these. It just said you, the city of Billings, we're going to give you the authority to raise that money to maintain, so you didn't have that shortfall in public safety. Only reason why that amendment was on there is for public safety. Period. And if you want more input, um, I'll be glad to talk about it. It's not the end. We're going to see more of these bills. We're going to see more tax on levies, more tax on property tax. I'll guarantee, if I'm a betting man, that's the one thing I'll win is bad luck, and it's going to be those bills. They're going to come after them. To the, to city administrators' point on your other agenda item, fire apparatus, it's doubled. We went from twenty one manufacturers down to seven, and of those seven, they're controlled by three companies. And it takes two to three years to get a fire truck. A truck that probably costs six hundred to seven hundred thousand two years ago, one point two, one point three million, three years to get it. And that doesn't even count what our ladder trucks are going to cost. So if you're going to build that equipment, you better get after it now, because it's, it ain't getting any cheaper. Quality's going down, but the price is going up.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for your efforts in telling it. Uh, any other public comment on item number one? Very good. Thank you. Uh, that uh, uh, if there's nothing else on item two, counsel? Uh, the TRP will move on to item number three, our capital improvement plan for the five-year period twenty twenty seven, uh, fiscal year to fiscal year thirty one. Um, uh, back to you, Chris. I think, uh, you, are you gonna, just gonna, anything before we hand it to Andy or?
Andy is going to kick us off, and then I've got at least one slide I'll chime in on, so he and I'll, he's got the most of it. He's going to start it, and, and we'll go from there.
Very good. Andy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's starting to feel like church with everyone sitting in the same spot, so I wanted to move and sit by you, Mayor. So, thanks for letting me do that. Uh, I have the twenty.
And we, and at the end, we're going to pass a, a plate, and we only need to raise just over five hundred million dollars.
All right. Well.
Deep.
We're, yeah, and we're not leaving until it's all there. Uh, so I have it for you, the proposed twenty twenty seven capital improvement plan. This is a five-year plan that you guys see and approve every year. Um, what it, what it does, I mean, you on council are aware of this, some more for the general public. It outlines the next five years of capital projects that the city intends to pursue. And the reason why it's important, one, it helps us set up the budget process, which begins in January of next year. Uh, so it really identifies, hey, what are those main, major things we're going to be focusing on next year? But also, what should we be looking forward to in years to come? Because we're starting to plan for those, maybe starting some design on those projects additionally. In some cases, starting to set rates appropriate so that we can afford those projects. So uh, that's some of the major important reasons why you want to adopt a CIP and why we do a five-year plan every year. Um, the, the, the proposed CIP is attached to the staff memo. Um, it's broken out in the, the very high-level summary on the first five pages. And then the next three sections are all the same information, but it's a list of projects categorized in different ways, uh, hoping to provide you with a way that's understandable and has the information you want to see. That's uh, categorized by project and categor- categorized by the budgeted fund. Um, and then by funding source, which would be debt, grants, special assessments, that type of stuff. Um, the bulk of the plan are individual project pages. So uh, if you're looking at one of those categorized lists, especially in the PDF document, I would encourage you, you know, hit Ctrl F and start typing in the title, and then you can find every instance of that and go right to that project page. It's a quick way to navigate it. And then this year, at the end of that, we have put a list of future CIP projects. These would be projects that are outside of that five-year window and projects that may not have an identified funding source, but are known that they'll be needed uh, in, in the long term, I'll say. Um, this, that is new this year. There's been a lot of requests about, hey, what about this project, that project? And um, it's kind of always a debate on what should be included and what shouldn't be included. And when there's an identified funding source, we want it in there, and with, when it's within the five-year plan. Um, when it's a project we know we want to do, but we're not sure how that's going to be done, or it's a project five to ten years from now, that's what that list is attempting to um, describe. So what is a capital improvement plan? Talked about why that's important. Uh, ours is a five-year plan. Um, but it really does kind of set the trajectory for next year's budget and future years. It isn't, it is just a plan, does not authorize funding. Um, it, it doesn't even, at this point, say, hey, staff, go ahead and start, you know, bring in contracts, bidding these projects, that kind of stuff. We're, we're really just planning for these and starting to put the wheels in motion so we can be successful there. Projects that are included in here are projects that cost more than fifty thousand dollars and have a useful life of greater than one year. In most cases, that's new construction um, or rehabilitation of existing assets. This does not include vehicles. That, we have a separate plan for that. Uh, does not include repairs and maintenance on existing assets, and it doesn't include technology items because there's another plan for that. So this is the overall summary of the plan, and I'm blocked here. So the total plan, the total five-year plan is five hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Um, that pretty, usually ranges around that four hundred to six hundred million dollar range, depending on what projects are in there. Uh, you have the categorization in the chart below, shows you the future year's outlook and um, by department. Uh, the first year here is a hundred and three million dollars. Here again, the same information, again categorized a different way, trying to get those of you who learn in different ways, something that is useful for you, and a pie chart, my favorite, so, by department. Um, and there we go. Now I got that off here. Uh, most often, it's our utility projects and transportation projects, public works, that make up the bulk of the CIP followed by airport and transit. They are capital-heavy departments, not O and M-heavy departments. Um, so this is not uncommon for those departments to make up the bulk of the CIP. So how are these projects funded? Again, if they're primarily their public works projects, so primarily through user fees and charges, which is how we generate revenue in those departments, uh, and special assessments. We do have some grant projects in here, uh, as well as some state revenue-funded projects. Move this over now. All right. Um, just wanted to highlight a few of the major FY twenty seven projects for your discussion, or just to make them aware to you, then we, we can go, we won't go through every single project here today, but I, I do have slides for all of them. Um, if you looked at the attachment, you saw that, but I'm not going to go through them all with, with you. Uh, one of the larger projects is the landfill, landfill cell six expansion. This, this project uh, is being requested to be moved up a year from the prior CIP. Uh, we were at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, uh, was that last week or last month? I don't recall exactly when, um, to discuss this. The uh, the, the request right now is that the design and planning be done in the current fiscal year, and then the construction occur next year. They've had a study done that was, I believe was emailed to you guys today, um, and that says you've got two and a half, three years left, I think. So maybe give me a thumbs up on that. Yeah. Uh, before you need it, and it takes that long to construct it. So the request is to get going on that now, so we have it available when that time comes.
Uh, sure. So I guess if you got, rather than, uh, is that okay?
It's a short presentation, so that'd be fine with me.
To pop it.
To go for it. Yeah, go for the question.
Andy?
Go ahead.
Just a quick one. On your landfill cells six expansion, how much money do you have raised for that already?
I'm going to look to public works on that one. I'm going to go to, we'll advance up here to.
This is on?
Yep.
Okay. Um, right now, well, most of that project will be debt-funded, so we will be selling bonds for the uh, majority of the construction. We do have the money for the design to get going now, though.
How much reserves right now do you have?
About five million.
About five billion?
Yes.
Out of the thirteen million dollar project?
Out, yeah. Like I said, most of it's going to be debt-funded, so we're not going to have to increase rates enough to actually collect the fourteen million dollars needed.
I've just seen that you said seven percent. So to do that and to be able to um, pay for that landfill cell, you're going to at least see seven percent a year?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Kennedy, we've actually been raising our landfill rates at a pretty high rate for the last few years to get us to the level needed for the debt service on this, but we have a few more years needed so that we are adequate, adequately funded for that debt service level on that fourteen million dollar debt.
Concern I have is, once you raise them, we never see them come back down.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, obviously the, the bonds would be for twenty years. Um, I would anticipate other needs at the landfill during that time, so I, I would guess that you're probably right that landfill rates would not decrease going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Andy.
All right. Um, there's additional projects at the airport. The, the airport is probably more unique than anywhere else at the city in that the majority, actually, all of the funds there are or all the projects there are funded either through federal grants or user fees for flying in and out of the airport. There's not uh, property tax or assessment or uh, local funds that go into that. Um, some of the major transportation projects there for twenty seven include Monan Road and Rimrock Road. Um, and then the, I guess it'd be year two of the storm water or storm sewer projects. Um, you guys have been very intentional about getting a lot of those uh, infrastructure improvements made and continuing that. And so I think there's quite a bit planned there. Uh, and then in here, you'll also see the South Park Pool design planned for twenty seven with construction planned in twenty eight. This is tied to the expansion of the South Texas Increment District, which is uh, underway. It's not done. Um, but that, that project's in here, planned for that timeline. And then uh, Fire Station One remodeled to continue investment in improving our fire stations. So the, the CIP is available online at billingsmt.gov slash CIP. You can find their, this proposed CIP, you can find. You can find the current adopted CIP and coming soon. You can probably still find the old interactive map on there, but you won't find these projects mapped. They're, that's working, or we're working on that currently and hoping to have that up and running again soon. I was surprised how much activity that website actually gets, so we're going to continue doing that. Give you a sense of timeline here on where we've been, what we're doing, and what the expectation is out of this meeting. So we met with some Budget and Finance Committee members last week and went through this, had some discussions. Obviously, the work session this evening, we'll have Budget and Finance Committee coming up on the 12th. I feel like those dates are wrong because that should be a Wednesday. Oh, no, that is right, sorry. On Wednesday, the 12th, we'll be presenting to the Combined Neighborhood Task Force meeting on the 13th. And then City Council work session on the 17th, if needed. I anticipate some, at least abbreviated version, probably will be after this evening. And then with the, then on the regular council meeting for December 8th for consideration and adoption that evening. And I'll turn to Chris.
So Andy mentioned one of the, actually, he mentioned them both. But so, two major additions to this capital improvement plan. The first one Andy talked about is the reference to future projects that go beyond the five years but are significant and we think they at least need to be on people's radar. The other area is this estimate, and I'll emphasize, these are estimates, but they're the estimated rate increases necessary to fund the capital plan. So I'm going to stick to three areas that are pretty, I think, I find them pretty black and white relative to, pretty simple to understand. Street maintenance. Generally speaking, for every $1 we spend on street maintenance, we save $5 in reconstruction. So when our analysis tells us that we're not spending enough maintaining our streets, then we're just creating a future liability for the community. So in this case, we're pointing out that provided inflation, construction inflation and other things stay generally where they are, we do anticipate about a 7% increase for '27 and about 6% increase that each year thereafter in order to get us caught up in where we need to be so that ideally we are spending maintenance dollars, not reconstruction dollars, one to five. Similarly, is our pipes under the ground? Whether they're water pipes or sewer pipes, it's pretty black and white. An engineer can tell you that pipe's going to last you 100 years. You can look at our pipe replacement, and you're going to see in this plan some pretty hefty increases in moving up how much pipe's getting replaced each year. But that's to get us from that pipe on paper lasting 140 years down to the reality that it's actually going to last 100 years. So though I know no one, on the one hand, necessarily wants to see, look at, that these adjustments are going to be made, I would tell you you can make them in one of two ways. Well, there's one of three. We can keep not getting there, and then sooner or later, as problems happen, you've got to deal with it. But that's not been, this body's, this body's been moving pretty steadily to fix this problem for the last several years. So this provides us with a multi-year plan to get to where we need to be or, you know, bite the elephant all at once. That's ultimately your guys' call as we go forward. But we wanted to show for the first time in this CIP, generally speaking, in order to fund the capital that's in front of you, these are the rate adjustments that's going to be necessary. But it doesn't approve those rate adjustments, just like it doesn't approve the actual capital projects being done. That happens in the budgeting process, so.
Very good, okay. Council, I did ask, are we done, Andy?
Okay, there you go.
Councilor Neese wanted to...
If I can't hear myself.
...jump in, I'm just going to ask Councilor Neese whether it can wait till the end of the presentation or is this something?
It's a quick question. It's regarding you, when you mentioned you're going to be presenting to the task force group. If the task force, specific task force would like you to meet with them, would you attend their meetings or someone attend the meetings to explain this CIP to them?
Yes, especially if it's the Heights Task Force.
Thank you.
All right.
I know you love the Heights Task Force.
I have presented to task forces in the past. That's, happy to do that again. It usually ends up being after it's adopted, just given the timeline where we're at. But if there's one we want to squeeze in here, that's, that's fine, too, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Very good, go ahead.
Well, that's all I had for the presentation, but there are some, really, as a result of the discussion on the 22nd with some of the Budget and Finance Committee members, there are a few projects I wanted to highlight for you tonight to at least think about as we move forward on this timeline. If you have feelings one way or the other, certainly interested in hearing about them. But one was moving the landfill up a year, so we've tackled that one. The other item is... Where is this? Yeah, 21st Street Underpass Improvements. This is in here as a result of some council action a few years ago, I believe. Requested that it be in there. And Debbie's prepared to talk more about that, but it's significantly more expensive than it was in the past. And we would like some direction on if this should be a, continue to be a priority at the current price tag of $14.5 million or not. I believe the rates that Chris presented earlier do not support that, that high cost of a project here. They would have to probably be higher in order to accomplish that.
That's correct. In fact, the recommendation from staff would be, the project is so expensive that there's so many other transportation needs that would jump in front of that, so.
And then, okay.
We'll come back to each one of these.
No, I want to address the 21st.
We'll come back to it. Can we, we just, let's put them all out and we'll come back.
The last, the last project I wanted to point out to you guys, it's new in there this year, and it's the expansion of the Evidence Facility Lot. They're running out of space for storing vehicles there. A solution does need to be arrived at. Currently, the CIP has this funded with South TIF funds. There's projected cash flow to be able to afford this. I wanted to point it out to you for a couple of reasons, just for you to talk about and determine if that's the funding source you want to use for it. We did do the building expansion a few years ago, almost entirely funded by the South TIF. So precedence is there for using that for this type of improvement. It's, I would say it's a benefit for the general taxpayer. Probably arguable whether it's a benefit for economic development in the district. But I didn't want to be accused of trying to pass that one off or trying to hide it from you guys, so I just wanted to point that one out as well. And I think at that, those are the only ones I really wanted to point out individually. Oh, no, sorry, one more, based upon some emails. The Parks projects do not include anything in Cottonwood Park. There's been some email discussion about that. I know Gavin has been working on some stuff with that. And so I assume that probably was going to come up anyway. But those were the projects that I wanted to point out and highlight outside of what has already been mentioned, so.
Very good. Anything else, Andy, before we give it to the council?
That's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, council, it's all yours. Councilor Kennedy, you want to jump in?
Chris, if we're going to get rid of the 21st Street Underpass, can we quit spending money on another study in planning to look at 21st Street? We've already had a couple of those, and we keep on spending money on studies on those, and it's not going to go anywhere. So I would really like to see no more money go to the 21st Street Underpass project.
Any comment, Chris? Is there any more, I mean, obviously, you're not going to...
I mean, I don't know what's out there. I would kind of openly ask you, Mayor, right? You're our representative on the regional planning group. That's where a lot of these plans come from.
It's not on the PCCs or car screen. Here comes Wyeth. I don't know of anything in the hopper, but yeah, if we decided not to move forward, there'd be no reason to spend money on planning something that wasn't going to happen. But Wyeth, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and council. So there's no future studies. The study actually that we're in the middle of right now is what has determined how expensive the options are. So when that's complete, we'll have the options. We'll know how expensive they are, and then it'll, you know, then we go from there. So there's no further studies after that. That's what we wanted to do, was to figure out what we were dealing with down there.
Wyeth, on that, is there a lot that still needs to be done and a lot of money that still has to be incurred? Or are we kind of at the end of that process? Is it something that should be cut off midstream if this body doesn't want to go ahead?
Mayor, I know, I'd have to double-check. I don't think there's a whole lot left there, and I don't, I don't recall it either. But we can check, but I don't think so, and I think we still want to make sure. And Councilman Neese is on the Project Oversight Committee, so he can chime in as well. But I think we want to make sure we get the information complete.
Okay, very good, Councilor Neese?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the Project Oversight Committee on this has been meeting about this. There's a lot of different design plans. They're going, they're going through the public comment phase of it now. There's, there's options from just, you know, a million or so all the way up to, I think it's 20 million. So it depends, there's, the committee hasn't come forth with any one recommendation. They've narrowed it down to either, I think it's like the 13.5 or maybe something a lot smaller. So until we know what the public feedback is, I don't, I don't, it's a, it's a contract. It's already been awarded, so it's not that we're going to, I wouldn't cut it off in the middle. And it's, I believe it's the estimated time of, probably to be finished sometime in January. My, my, and the discussion has been is, the city's not going to fund this. This is going to have to be done probably through sometime federal-type funding if we're going to go through, because there's a lot of expense with that railroad, the bridge and stuff like that. But there are some other things that can be done to make it more attractive and a lesser amount, and that's where it may fall. And of course, then the city will be responsible for that. So I would keep it in, in this plan for now because we could find out that this body will say, well, let's, let's spend some of this money because that area is now going to be in, within two TIF areas once the Subura expands. And so there could be some additional TIF funds from both the Subura and maybe downtown to help fund a portion of the, if it's a smaller, smaller modification.
Okay, very good. Other discussion? And we'll try to stick with project by project if we can. I asked Andy if you wanted to go in any particular order and like A through Z, and he said no. So we'll just kind of bounce around as council wants to. Councilor Shaw?
Yeah, I was just saying it's a different topic if people still have...
Okay, anything else on 21st Street? We probably need to get some, if we want it out of the CIP, the staff would appreciate that. Conversely, if we want to keep it, the probably staff would appreciate knowing that, too. Are we prepared to come to some conclusion on that? Councilor Boyet?
And I'll go along with the recommendation from staff that remove, that remove 21st Street Underpass due to the value of the cost.
That's your opinion or are you making a motion?
That's my motion.
It is a motion to remove the 21st Street Underpass, okay. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Aspen Lighter. So you've got that on the table, council? Did you want to address your motion, Councilor Boyet, Aspen Lighter?
No, I think it's just pretty basic. The dollar amount is staggering. There's a lot of other things we could be using that money.
Okay, Councilor Neese, you seemed to express a different view earlier.
Yeah, I think, I think to have this on the CIP one more year is not going to hurt anything. Right now, we don't know what the, right now, it's at what, 13.5? That is a staggering amount, but that isn't necessarily the amount that is, is going to come before this body and this body decide to do. So I think we should wait till the study is done and then at that point to decide if you want to remove it from the CIP and let it be removed from the CIP. But I think this is a little premature to take it off the CIP before the actual study is completed and the indication of what the costs are going to be.
Councilor Ashler?
Yeah, I hate that we get in the habit of doing these things that, you know, we put a $13 million plug that we know we're never going to spend in the CIP. I, I think that's misleading. It conflates the numbers. It makes things look way worse than they are. I'm, I seconded the motion because I think we need to take it out until the study is done. When the study's done and the, and the committee comes back and says, hey, we can do some, some advanced signaling and coordination like that. And there's an actual project and a recommendation, then come back and put it in the CIP. But holding a $13 million placeholder in there that we all know is never going to get funded and never going to get built, I think is misleading to the public. It conflates the number and it confuses issue. So take it out until there's an actual project and an actual recommendation, and then bring it back. We've got to get into a better habit of doing that when there's a real project on the end of it as opposed to putting these conflated estimates in there that we know are not going to happen.
Thank you, Councilor Shaw Gillick-Gon.
Thank you. I won't support the motion because I, we saw for years and years this happened with South Park Pool. It just kept getting pushed and pushed. But keeping it on the CIP, I think, was an important step. The other piece I would add is that going out for any kind of grant funding for this, you need it in a document like this to be able to even apply for a lot of federal grants. So that would be my take, it's far enough out that I think we're fine. I hear, I hear what everyone's saying, but in terms of planning and going after grant funding, I think we need this in the CIP.
Councilor Gillick?
Yeah, so this was put on the CIP by Councilmember Yakowicz in 2021. It was kind of on the heels of the one down 27th, you know, probably being in the order of 150 million or something like that and just not, not going to go forward and trying to do something to redirect traffic around when the trains were just stalled out there. It works better if you do have two-way traffic on Montana Avenue without, it doesn't, it's not a really good connection necessarily. So like from a, the, the cost-benefit ratio isn't particularly good at 13 million. So I totally understand the staff recommendation in that regard. It does seem, though, that the committee is discussing some other options, a range of options. And that respect, I think that this is a study, it's not like the kind of thing that just goes on a shelf and no one, and it gets ignored. It actually provides valuable information, not only a range of options, but it could tell us that we shouldn't pursue this anymore. And that's kind of what, you know, at 13 million, probably in terms of its benefit, maybe it doesn't make sense. But some of the other options, it seems to me, do make sense. I think at least one of the smaller options should still stay on the CIP, if I'm concerned.
Councilor Ong?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, in the last budget meeting, we had this conversation about doing some mock runs to see what could be done with advanced signaling around 13th. Can you just refresh my memory of what we agreed to explore in lieu of a 21st Street improvement? It was your idea, Councilmember Aspen Lighter.
Yeah, I think it was literally to have the fire department do some assessments of, not, not some study paid for by somebody else, but literally be able to...
Drive runs.
Drive what some of these distances and options over the tracks are, as well as a reminder that we do have a station south of the tracks. But to, from a practical standpoint, understand the time it takes to get there without 21st.
And have we done that?
I've not seen numbers for tonight. I'm sorry, I don't know if they have and they just haven't come up yet.
Maybe Debbie has.
There we go.
Hi.
Thanks.
I did talk to, actually, Chief Banfield was who I talked to about it. And he said it depends so much on time of day and other things that are happening as far as traffic. He said I could do it, but it could be different every time we run it. So he said it's, it's on the matter of less than a minute to go down there and back because you're talking about going to 13th. The 13 million we put in there does not get a fire truck under it, it's an ambulance. So the 22 million gets a fire truck. So he said less than a minute, probably closer to 30-second delay was what he thought, depending on traffic and other things.
Very good.
So it was hard to run it, he said, just based on every scenario.
Yeah, I think I'm going to support the staff recommendation based on that. If people feel very strongly about not losing sight of it, it can go in the future CIP list perhaps for undefined improvements, but I'm going to support the motion.
Good, other discussion? I'll oppose the motion, not because I don't appreciate the price tag and open not to going forward with this, but I've just been around for long enough that we've had this discussion for eight years. This was an outgrowth of when the 27th Street overpass and underpass failed, we looked for alternatives in Plan B, and this became Plan B. So we've been discussing it for about eight years, and I'm not personally willing, just based on eight minutes of conversation, to abandon something that has such... to abandon something that has such a long history until it's been well thought through. So, but I do appreciate the understanding or the problems of the cost. And I think we have to be realistic about that. So I don't see a lot of harm in keeping it in there, but long-term, we'd have to look for the very best alternative. That's just my view. Any other discussion before we have a vote? There's enough division, we'll probably have a hand in 15 to 20 years. Councilmember Kennedy corrects me. Yeah, yeah, it's been around for a long time. And Councilmember Yakowicz was the driver there. Okay, we ready to vote on the motion? Again, the motion, Councilmember Boyet, motion to remove the 21st Street underpass from the CIP. There's going to be different sides here. So why don't go ahead and do a show of hands for in favor of the motion? So if in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Councilmembers Aspen Lighter, Kennedy, Boyet, Tidswell, Rogers, and Owen. If against, oh, and Rupesis, okay, I'm sorry. And if against, Councilmembers Shaw, Gillick, Neese, and Cole. So the motion passes, so council or staff has its direction. Councilmember Neese?
Mayor, if it's not out of order, and because it was removed from the CIP, I guess I would like to make a motion to direct staff to put it on the future CIP list if that's not out of order.
Yeah, I doubt, that's up to staff, but I don't see any reason you wouldn't. Or some sort of, maybe not the underpass, but some sort of further direction? Any objection to that, Councilmember Ashler?
Yeah, I mean, then why did we take it off? I mean, I think we took action. If staff finds a reasonable solution, they're going to bring back a reasonable solution and come back. But I mean, we just took it off, so let's quit talking about it.
Yeah, there's no second then. There's no second.
Okay, all right. Staff can deal with that as they want to, I guess. Now, Councilmember Shaw?
Is a new topic in order? Okay. Andy, I have a question about the evidence facility lot expansion. I really do not like that money coming from the TIF. What are the other options there? What, also, is it just building a new parking lot? If so, why is it costing 1.3 million?
Great questions. Yes, it is just building a new parking lot. Why it costs so much? I'll let Kevin prep for that answer. Other options that exist, it's 1.3 million. That's not unattainable with some planning ahead of time. So other options would probably be, you know, your public safety fund, general fund. But you would probably want to be intentional about setting aside some funds for that, which means 2028 might be impossible, but 2029, maybe not. Perhaps that would be the path forward there if that was the desire.
Okay, follow-up, Mayor. I guess I would make, I won't make a motion yet, but let discussion go. But I don't like the funding source. That's my, that's my big issue of that coming from the TIF. I think we've already spent quite a bit of TIF money on that building down there. I understand it is good value for the taxpayers. I just, with the huge list of projects that are needed in that area, this one isn't going to float to the top for me personally.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Ashler?
With this, I asked the same question about 1.3 million. I think that's a wildly high conservative estimate based on very little planning at this stage of the game. There's some drainage things to take care of, but I think this is probably on the order of a half a million dollars overestimated from my perspective in doing this work.
We get further discussion on the issue of the evidence center. Councilmember Gillick?
I guess I am just interested in hearing like, how large a lot are we talking? Like, that's, sounds like a very, very large lot. I guess I'm wondering, what's, is it replacing an existing one? Or is there a new need that is expanding? We have so much more evidence that we need to have.
A lot more cars according to the discussion in the CIP. But Kevin, I think can weigh in on that. I think it's all just new.
Yeah, Councilmember Gillick, thanks for the question. It is a large lot. We would like to basically finish out the rest of the property that the city owns there for an impound lot. There has been some new developments to where we can actually gravel instead of pave it, but they are busting at the seams. They have nowhere to put vehicles. Part of the process, something that was discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee was, can we get vehicles out quicker? We are working on that. But the courts are holding the vehicles until everything is exhausted, which sometimes can take years. We are looking at a partnership with DOJ. They've got an impound lot, but it's not real secure, so I'm not going to go into that any further. But potentially that they would be leasing some spots. So the plan would be develop out a rest of our space out there. I agree with Councilmember Aspen Lighter. I think we could come in under that budget. But, you know, remember that we have to have a very secure lot. So it has to be, you know, fenced, cameras, you know, a bunch of things like that that also go along with that. And there's a big stormwater pond there that we've got to deal with.
Appreciate the conversation you had at committee meeting that I didn't attend. Because, yeah, I think doing demand reduction by speeding up the process and sort of exhausting everything we can in those areas is good before we get to such a large lot.
Can I ask Andy and Kevin, if the funding source were changed to not include the TIF dollars, what would you put in that spot? Buy lottery tickets or?
Oh, for the funding source, I guess my thought there would be probably to pin down much more accurately what we think that cost is and then work to fund that through general fund over two or three years, depending on what that number ends up being. I think if it really were half a million dollars less, you probably could do that in a year or maybe a little bit, less than two years, I think you'd probably be able to do it. So that'd be my recommendation at this point. If the, which you're going to do anyway, right? I mean, we're not going to say, oh, it's South TIF, so let's spend 1.3 million with really nice gravel. But I think that's probably got to be the plan forward on this project.
Chris, you want to comment, Councilmember Boyet?
Sure. I think any project you see funded with the Subura, you should be looking at very deliberately as what is it doing relative to add more, find private economic investment within the area? Because that is how we grow the TIF. So I realize that we've, we got a huge public project with the pool to do and we're committed to doing that. It's going to happen. It makes it easier on the general fund. It cringe every time. We, where's the other source? The other source is very difficult, the general fund. But it does concern me that we're, we've expanded the size of that Subura district substantially for economic activity and redevelopment to take place. And there's, I think, our best case scenario is we're going to have some private developers or we can find some who, along with city infrastructure projects, would invest millions of dollars or tens of millions of dollars. Short of that, we're not going to see growth in value and we're not going to get to see the kind of redevelopment that we're seeing in the older part of the Subura. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyet and then Councilmember Shaw?
I have a good ask. Kevin, how big a lot are we talking on? An acre, half acre, three quarters acre?
I don't know the exact, but I would imagine we have about another acre, maybe a little bit more that we could use for an impound lot.
Okay, Councilmember Shaw?
I guess I'll make a motion to change the source of funding from the TIF to the general fund or what our finance director recommends.
Okay, and so the project stays, but with a different funding source. Is there a second, Councilmember Gillick? Would either of you like to speak more specifically to your motion?
I think I already spoke to it, but I just, I guess I would encourage us to come up with a shorter, and if it's going to take a year or two to do it this other way, come up with some kind of an interim solution that maybe limps us along a little bit. Kevin's looking at me like he's not very happy, but it's not the project that I have a problem with. It's the funding source because the TIF, as we know, we have way more projects than there are money, than there is money for.
Very good. Gillick, Councilmember Gillick?
Mine would be the size of the project, but also the funding source. I think to Chris's point, it would be good to have projects that do help with the tax base. I think the south side, South Park Pool does help shore up the neighborhood in terms of, you know, people feel like, hey, you know, maybe there is reinvestment. People are interested in our neighborhood and people reinvest in their own houses. That's housing stock. That's not commercial development. But you're more likely to have commercial development in a neighborhood that is active and people are doing well. And so I think there can be more of an argument made there than, say, evidence facility lot expansion. So that's why I'm seconding.
Not your top priority where you want to live? Where the closest evidence center is? Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I'm not quite sure if we're removing it from funding source. Now it's unfunded project. I mean, what is the recommendation for funding so we can make sure we're?
I think we heard the recommendation is the general fund.
Okay, so you're going to move it from Subura into general fund? Okay, and Chris, does the general fund have that, the amount of money it needs to fund this? And so if it doesn't, then we're just approving an unfunded project?
So I'm going to let Andy go here after I make this statement, which is tonight, right? This is your first shot at seeing this. It's not like we're walking out of here with the conclusive pieces, but we're getting some direction to go to the next step. So Andy, what would you add?
Sure. So I would, I would say that today, no, there's not that funding there. But we're talking about a project planned in FY '28 that hopefully is significantly overbudgeted right here. So I would say there's two things. One, reduce that cost of that project. And then start funding for it. We have fiscal year '26, whatever reserves we end with at the end of the year, and then '27 and '20, well, '27, I guess, if we keep it in '28. We may, after examining this, say, look, we need to push it to '29 to get that funding there. But if general fund is the source, which again, I think this dollar amount's small enough, you can do it. We may need to push it a year though, just to get the funds set up. But I don't think that's unrealistic.
Okay, thanks. I think I'm going to oppose the motion just because I think that the Subura, I think we can reduce the amount and the Subura may be able to do this. One of the things I like about the TIF funds is, the TIF areas is it does allow us to do some public projects. Now, I agree, we can't do too many. And the pool is a really big one that people have, that we're looking at. But I think that we need to, we need to consider that this is one of those things where the entire public, the entire city is going to benefit when we spend money on public projects. I'm, I think it needs to be a smaller amount. And I would support a motion to say half the amount because I think it's for gravel lot. That's just crazy unless you're buying land on the beach somewhere. And so, but I won't support this motion because I think it needs to stay in the TIF for now. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Owen?
I don't remember who said it, if Andy or Chris said it, but one of you said there's money in here to do this, in the South TIF, to do this project. But I don't want us to pretend that the South TIF expansion was just about a pool. There's real serious redevelopment needs in the triangle. There are serious redevelopment needs on 27th, on First. So are we working under the assumption that there is this money, period? Or is there this money and then money to do redevelopment in the south side with the expansion?
So it was me who said that. The projections that I've done for the South TIF district make, but really only make the assumption on the existing district because anything that we expand to is going to be at base. So the presumption there is at least initially, there's going to be zero increment. Right now, the, the South TIF district, when making assumptions to cover the debt for South Park Pool, will net positive cash flow each year between half a million and $800,000 a year and has done that for the prior past years. So when I say there's 1.3 million available to cash flow this project in the South TIF, that's how we're getting there. It's accumulation of funds that haven't been spent in years past as well as projections for this year and the next couple of years of unobligated TIF funds. But by doing that, if you leave this in there and you move forward with this plan, you're prioritizing this over 1.3 million of any other projects out there. So I completely understand.
Repeat that number again, roughly half a million to?
Half a million on the low end. It's probably closer to 700 or 800,000 a year. They, the South TIF district saw pretty significant growth. If you recall, I don't remember what presentation it was I gave a while ago, but that's the only district that actually saw a positive increase in taxable value, even with the changes. And that's largely in part to the new development on the interstate frontage road that occurred there that wasn't there before.
But that's not a lot of money. We're basically talking eating up two or three years worth of.
So if someone did show up and say, hey, we're going to do a redevelopment project on South 27th, bring a needed grocery store or anything else, we'd have no ability to do any of the normal TIF things.
You would be limited. You would not have no.
Fair, that's fair. Yeah.
I'd want to talk about sense of scale there, but yeah, you wouldn't be talking about a $10 million project or probably even a $3 million project in the first year.
Okay. That, to me, is a problem. I think we can find, I think we can bring down the amount. I remain hopeful that we can speed up court processes and get a smaller lot need. So I'm going to support the motion because I think we're tying our hands too much in the South TIF.
Councilmember Boyet?
And I totally, I want to vote, I totally agree that this, I want the Subura money used for revitalization of the area for businesses. South 27th alone could do it or State Avenue. So, yeah, I mean, if they bring it down a half a million bucks, maybe we can figure out the money in three or four years for this lot. I've been to the lot before and it does need to be repicked. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. It's a disaster. We need more room. But I think we could do it another way, so I'll go along with that.
Okay, Councilor ready to vote? Motion by Councilmember Owen to keep the project, but, or, Councilmember Shaw, I'm sorry, to keep the project but change the funding source away from the south side TIF dollars. If in favor of the motion, raise your hand. If opposed to the motion, raise your hand. Voting in opposition, Councilmembers Ashler, Kennedy, and Neese, all other councilmembers voting in favor. So the motion passes. That resolves the evidence facility issue that Andy brought up. The other, one of the other issues he brought up was Cottonwood Park. I'll, if I may, I'll jump into that one. My quest of the council would be to add Phase One of Cottonwood Park. Cottonwood Park itself is a very expensive project. We don't have the money to do that, obviously. But we do have cash and loo funds that have been accumulating but not being spent. And every year, they become less valuable because the cost of construction goes up a lot more than they do. And so getting something built after the 23 years that we've had the property and made the commitment to the Forbes, I think is very, very important. Phase One for, if you're not familiar with the master plan, it calls for a parking area, natural trails, a couple of bridges over the ditch, rough cut in some natural trails in the remaining 40 acres, and that's about it. So the price tag is something over a million bucks. I in an email incorrectly, I believe, said that I thought we had about $800,000 of cash and loo. Andy corrects me that he wasn't exactly sure of that number, but it was less. 560? So $560,000. So my motion would be to add the Cottonwood Park project, which has always been in our CIP, in, but only for Phase One. And with the funding source being cash and loo dollars and any additional grants or private donations that might be contributed. Not asking for general fund dollars, although, boy, if you find them, that'd be great. But at this point, it'd be just cash and loo. So that would be the motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Rupesis makes a motion. Speaking of my motion, we have most of that money. Maintenance is always an issue, but it's a natural area, a relatively small area. And I'd hate to have that tail wag the dog when we don't even know whether that's $5,000 or $10,000 a year. That's not the way that we encourage donations by worrying over, you know, 5,000, an additional $5,000. We're going to have to do a lot of that maintenance anyway. It's a natural area that we need to cut the grass, which we should be doing anyway to prevent fires. Councilmember Rupesis, you want to address the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you wanted to pick a year, FY '27?
That'd be the first year and I could, yes, yeah.
Okay, I would support that.
First year. Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Owen. Oh, I apologize. I saw Councilmember Boyet first. Councilmember Boyet, Shaw, I know.
I'd like to see, I see Gavin's in the back there. Maybe he could come and say, you know, like 560,000. I thought the Phase One was $2 million, not a million. But can you give us some? you give us some information on what you think the project is? What could you do with the amount of money that you have? And how does that reflect into your department with work and everything?
Thank you for the question, Councilman Boyet. Mayor and council, the $564,555, I believe, that we have in the cash and lieu for Cottonwood. To put in perspective, when we created the parking lot at Castle Rock, that was about a $400,000 project. We're planning on putting some bridges in, even any type of rough cut trail. It's not that I am opposed to this project by any means. What we don't have is we literally don't have the maintenance for it, first and foremost. I completely understand the argument that as this money sits into the account, the purchasing power goes down every year. Okay? We can put this in FY '27. I would counter and say that conversations have been had with Public Works that in FY '29, FY '28, they're doing a design for the 54th Street Stormwater. FY '29, they plan to do the build of that. I think it would behoove us to look at piggybacking off of that project in that space to make our dollars go further.
Do you mind if I just ask what Public Works would be doing that we could piggyback on?
So the conversations that we've had, and of course, I'll defer to Director Melling in back, is that their stormwater abilities or creation of that space, they would be able to do some of the ancillary things, moving some dirt, let's say. That would be not a cost to us, nor would it take away from that 565 number. I don't have specifics on what that design nor actions are. That's just an idea to make the dollars go further.
Okay. And so Gavin, I feel we're in this year's CIP, but it didn't happen because there wasn't the money. It could be pushed back in future years.
Absolutely.
We do, frankly, I suppose.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Boyet. Was that?
Thank you, Gavin. So your recommendation is to keep this in the CIP but move it to 2029?
Not entirely. So I didn't put it in the CIP for a reason. And that was, you know, approximately seven months ago, when I presented the park's budget to all of you, I said, it's easy to build something, but we should not build something if we can't follow the equation through. And that was through the maintenance. Okay? We can build something, but I don't have new maintenance dollars to keep whatever we build up to snuff in that area.
So Gavin, that begs the question, what does it cost to maintain it?
Great question. Depends on what we put in there.
Something consistent with the master plan for Phase One? Natural area, two bridges and, and a pathway on dirt.
At this time, I couldn't even give you a number.
If I give you a number and I called it $10,000, would you disagree with that? How about if I give you $10,000?
Very generous, sir. I think it's, I look at it through the long lens, right? So the status of the department's current funding, long term, okay? Whatever we add on the front end, we have to take away from the back end. I do not have an inflationary growth currently calculated in this department's budget.
Okay, so you're opposed to any new projects. If you had a funding source for maintenance dedicated to this project, would it have your support?
If we had a dedicated funding source?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are you, were you done, Councilmember? Councilmember Shaw and Councilmember Owen?
I just wanted to understand from the movements, movements, what the trigger is going to be to start any development? Is it, it has, this account has to get up to a million dollars? What, where, what's the point at which, okay, now we do something? Because I appreciate that it's not asking for general fund money, cash and lieu and grants, but I-
The way I would answer that is council would have to approve a contract, and they'd have to be convinced that there was money to cover the contract. So we're not at the point unless Gavin is comfortable giving specific numbers for construction price, what that would be. Councilman Neese said 2 million. I was thinking closer to 1, but I don't know. But we could not, the city couldn't proceed unless it was comfortable. It had, had the money and it had a contract, though it could-
So you're not putting out any, okay, once it gets to this, a million dollars, that's what triggers the spending?
No, that's, that's correct. I don't know.
I just, trying to understand.
Staff would have to come up with a number that staff was comfortable with, just like it does with any CIP. Of course, it is not authorization. It is just a planning document. Staff would have to come up with a number that is comfortable. Okay, that was Councilmember Shaw. Councilman Rowan?
Now I'm further confused. Are, is the motion to put 560,000 back in this master plan and do something in '27?
The, the motion is only to put it on the CIP.
Correct, yeah.
Set to a CIP principles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and the amount would be a number between 1 and 2 million dollars determined by staff for construction cost, with the funding source to be cash and lieu and private donation.
I see. But, but there's no indication of what that project would be?
No, there, it, it would be Phase One as, as already defined in the Cottonwood Park master plan.
Which is what?
Which is, I wish we had a map.
I, I'm looking at the map, but I don't, it does, I don't-
Section north of the ditch, north, north of the ditch.
So the shelter, the turf, the pedestrian bridge?
Yes, and I think a memorial to the-
At the pond.
Is part of it, is part of it, too.
And we think that's 2 million dollars?
I, we, I think it's less than that, but the number I recall was closer to 1, so, but I've heard 2 here, so I'm saying between 1 and 2.
Okay.
Councilmember Rupes, maybe you have a better-
No, I don't have a better idea. What I, what I'd say is the importance of having any of these projects on the CIP is that it's giving direction to staff to, let's go working on this. And if we need to have a number before we budget it for this year or next year, let's get that number together. So we don't have to sit here, you know, this time next year, saying, well, what's the number? What are we gonna do? So I support getting it on the CIP for this year so we can actually have some concrete discussions on what is in, what's the number that has to be, what does the maintenance dollars have to be, how much more additional do we have to raise in private fundraising to, to meet that whatever level is. But we can't do that if, if staff doesn't get concrete direction of this is important, this is a priority, it's been 20-plus years, we need to get it done. So that's why I'm supporting getting it on the FY '27 CIP, so we can at least get that direction and get everybody pulling together.
And, and thank you. And the nice thing is, this is our first work session. So we're not approving a final CIP at this part.
Exactly. That's a budget year discussion. If we get to go through the budget-
I would expect Gavin could dig in, but in the next few weeks, and by the time we actually approve something in December, it would be more specific. Well, I'm sure it would be more specific. It'd have to be more specific. Councilmember Tidwell, this is your district.
Gavin, you and I toured this together. We saw, and, and there was a lot of, of dumping in, in such there. Obviously, that has to be cleaned up and made safe before we even start to talk about Phase One. How extensive do you feel it is? How much money do you feel that would be, just to get that cleaned up and safe?
Councilman Tidwell, mayor and council, that's a great question. At this time, I could not give you an estimate. But I do know is that we do have extensive concrete that has been dumped in that space. To what extent, how, you know, how much, I, I can't give you a volume.
Good. Councilman Rasplader?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've made no bones about it. I, I don't like this project at all. I never have from the beginning. And, and that's a, a varying opinion from, from others on the council, and I respect that. This is something that we just, we do not have any line of sight whatsoever to fund in any meaningful way. And this, this is like trying to bait, bait fish, is what it seems like to me. Like, we're, we're chumming the waters, we're, we're trying to get people drawn in by putting a couple nickels here. So then we're hooked, and we can't ever get out of it, and we never have the ability to fully develop it. And we sit there with a half-baked park with no meaningful infrastructure ever, and no line of sight to ever having any meaningful str, you know, infrastructure at that park to develop. I, I dislike the, the approach of, you know, put a placeholder in. We have had troubles with the Parks Department in being able to fund the infrastructure that they have, and we've appreciated the approach that, that Director Walter has taken in saying, hey, we, we have to be able to maintain whatever we're gonna build. And now here we are saying, hey, this makes us feel good. We can't fund it. We can't maintain it. We have no line of sight on maintaining it, but it makes us feel good. So remember what we were patting you on the back for? Just negate that, and let's go, go ahead and do this anyway. Like, this is what gets us in trouble. And it, it has gotten us in trouble forever and ever and ever in the Parks Department. It, it's a bad plan. It's a bad approach, and, and it does not have any longevity with it. If the Cottonwood group can go raise money and come back with a plan to build something and a plan to maintain it, then awesome. Let's talk about putting it on the CIP. But until that's there, we are going against, against best practices and going against what we have asked our directors to stop doing, and, and telling them now, eh, on this one, just forget that. You know, forget it on this one, but remember it on all the rest of them. And, and I think that's just sending mixed messages from the council that get us in trouble and get us crossed up with the directors all the time. We gotta stop that.
Very good. Other discussion on the motion. Councilmember Neese?
I, I don't think I'll support this motion, but I, I did have a question then. It, because the issue is, there's, there's no, there's no funding for it, no funding for maintenance. Is, is it possible that the city could put a assessment on the area around that park for the property owners to build and maintain that park?
My view is absolutely, but it'd have to be a very large area, about a mile and a half. It's a large, regional park.
Right. And so is that something that the, if, if that's the plan to get it done, is that something, again, as Councilmember Lander said, maybe that's Cottonwood Park's plan, or the people who want that park built, bring that back to council to, to look at if they're not funding it through, like, Land's Legacy did. They did a great job of funding that park, and that park jumped to the head, head of the line in a lot, over a lot of parks to get developed. But they had the money behind them to do that. And I think this park would need to do the same type of thing.
Yeah, but my, my only comment is that's not the motion. You know, that's a $20 million project. I'm talking about a 1 to 2 million, not even in the same neighborhood. And this body has never indicated any support for a large-scale SID, if that's the will of this group. I'd love to hear it, but I don't think this group is, has, is willing to do that, personally.
Yeah, I think it would have to come from those residents to say, yeah, we're willing to put, take a $20 million CID or SID to get this park developed, and then the council could have a discussion about it.
Very good. Okay, other discussion before we have a vote. Councilmember Shaw?
I, I've gone back and forth on this one. I, I just to say, I, I will support it because I see the value in having these projects in a planning document, because it helps get to the next step. But I think I expressed earlier some confusions and reservations about how exactly that will work. But, so just, I wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, very good. I think we'll move to a vote. I, I apologize to the public. We, we're taking these votes on things we've have, because there was never, you know, we're trying to deal with items one at a time. So, but let's, let's wrap this one up, and then we'll open up for public comment on the chance that somebody wants to weigh in on anything in the future. So again, the motion that I made is to put this on the CIP, give staff direction to come up with a number, probably between 1 and 2 million dollars, for fiscal year '27. Funding source to be existing cash and lieu dollars and some combination of additional grants or private donations, not city general fund dollars. And not TIF dollars, although if the TIF wants to make a contribution, probably take that, too. So is the motion clear? Okay, i- if the motion is clear, if in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Voting in favor are Councilmembers Cole, Rupesis, and Shaw. If voting in opposition, raise your hand, all other councilmembers, then that motion fails. We'll move on to whatever else council wants to talk about.
Public comment?
But is it okay to take the public comment now? I think we, we, we better otherwise public comments can be pretty meaningless by the time we get to it. So we'll do that, and then come back to Councilmember Kennedy. So, public, you have heard a discussion here on various things. This is pretty much the whole city's budget. So please come forward. If you want to comment on anything in the CIP, this is your opportunity.
I'll, I'll keep it brief, because probably more than I ever talk.
And you're, if you would-
1824 Bannock Drive, George Richards, that's R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S. I just wanna make a quick, brief statement on the 21 underpass. I know that's, obvious guys took a decision on that, but I'm gonna take you from my experience as a emergency responder in the city of Billings. Nine times out of 10, there's a track on the, on the train, the, train on the tracks here. Nine times out of 10, we got a call on the South Side. Guaranteed. When we're running a structural response with four engines, a truck, and you got one station south of the tracks, all your resources are north. You got a track on, a train on those tracks, you have the same situation of what you have in the Heights. You have one engine company up there. For a rescue, for a shooting, you call it motor vehicle wreck, extrication, you got one company, and you're by yourself for a while. And lately, if you're up in the middle of the night, those, those tracks are covered. The train ain't moving. And so when you're making these decisions, and at one time, 911 used to have an indicator that when a call came in or a train was on the tracks, it notified dispatch that notified us. You got a train on the tracks. We either take the 6th Street, or we take the 13th coming out of Station 1, 24th Street, 8th. We don't have that anymore. Not even in the new 911 system. Because for some reason, Burlington Northern doesn't allow that. And I don't know if it's a safety reason, a concern with track and their trains or what, but we don't have that system currently. Though it is a delay for us. And the only time they do get notified is when the engine company arrives and says there's a train on the tracks. So then we have to readjust. Do we take the 13th, or do we take the 6th, or do we wait here and hopefully the train moves? So those are decisions when you look at whether or not you want to fund a 21st Street. Yeah, we're not getting a pumper under there. It's pretty cool to go see some of the wrecks they've been on down there. But the hole is already a quarter way dug, if you want to look at it that way. So when you're, when you're thinking for the future, think of the public safety on the South Side. One engine company down there. And we get a lot of fires down there, not because it's the area, it's just because it's an older part of the city. And we see a lot of fires in older parts of city. So if you're looking at long-term investments, let's try to get a mid-time section to where we can have access to that South Side for emergency response. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Other public comment on the proposed CIP?
Hi, I'm Kristy Calderman. I live at 1623 Stony Meadow Lane. This comment might be posed for more future discussion, but I was actually, when you were talking about the landfill, I was just wondering what future plans are for expansion, and if there's any thought to more recycling or composting infrastructure. I actually pay for a private company to come and pick up my recycling and compost. And I guess I was just wondering, since the city started to do cardboard recycling and also do yard waste, I was wondering if there's any data on that type of, like, waste diversion, and if that would be more cost-effective moving forward in the future instead of a landfill expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can comment after public comment on that a little bit. Any other public comment on the proposed CIP? Before we close the public comment period? No one's coming forward, so we'll close the public comment period. Kristy would be here all night on, if we got into that too much. But let's connect you with Public Works. They, that's, recycling is something that comes up all the time. We do encourage people to use the Cottonwood, or the Cottonwood program. One, one track mine, the cardboard recycling project is, that's a big part of it. Yeah, yeah. Dump it in the park? No, no. Okay. Councilmember Owen, Councilman Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to follow up on a bit of public comment. We discussed in the Budget Committee when we talked about the 21st Street overpass, whether or not there was a notification system so that fire trucks would know and could orient. And we were told that there was, in fact, the ability for dispatch to communicate to fire trucks, but now I'm hearing that there isn't. So can we get it cleared up? but now I'm hearing that there isn't. So can we get it cleared up?
I, I can't speak to specifics this evening, but we certainly can come back to the next Budget Finance Meeting with the chiefs to tell us, wha- what is nine one one able to do? What's the communication there? Because certainly part of the analysis, if you go back to the Twenty-seventh Street project, which we, with time, forget, there was a roughly hundred and fifty-plus million dollar project that, yes, this city said, no way, that would not be good for our community. One of the alternatives was using technology for notifications and communications. So be glad to have them report back specifically what is, what's been analyzed and what exists.
Yeah, I think we need to understand that. That was important to my discussion or to my decision. I think we had talked about knowing we'd need to do some different signaling, but what, what was represented at the Budget Committee is that there is the ability to do notification and then make routing decisions without just hoping a fire truck shows up on the scene. So I'm perplexed and would like it to be cleared up. Thanks.
Councilmember Boyet?
Uh, and maybe for Andy, at one point we had heard that the police department was gonna need a big computer, new computer system and it was gonna be a billion dollars. I didn't see that anywhere in here.
So, uh, the computer system, really, the, man, I'm gonna screw this one up. The, that, that technology system wouldn't be in here anyway. This is constructed assets or, um, well, really largely just constructed assets. Uh, that would be part of the TRP. Um, and I think they're making some headway or movements on that, but I'll refer to Kevin. Also, you dropped your wallet and you don't want to leave that on the floor by me.
Want me to distract him, Andy? So Councilmember Boyet, yes, we're still talking about that, but right now, uh, in, in contact with Captain Woolley, there might not be a need for a brand-new system, but an upgrade to a current system. So we are investigating other possibilities for that. And in a couple of weeks, you're gonna hear kind of a presentation on, uh, from, about an Axon system of combining some of the technology components that are coming to end of life. So you will be hearing about some of that coming up.
Okay. All right, we'll continue our discussion. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes, these are transportation projects. Um, I have some questions on, we have the Fifth Avenue Corridor. I'm not sure what that project is on fiscal year 2030 for eight million dollars. I have a Highway Three underpass, um, underpass trail connector, um, King Avenue West, TransTech Center, and, uh, Yellow Jacket Trail. We have like, um, three, um, three and a half million there, eight million there, and they're all in 2030. Is, um, someone out there, is Debbie there or so I can talk on these projects? And are these projects funded out there or how did they get on this list? Wyeth?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Kennedy and, uh, Mayor and Council. Yeah, um, most of the projects, I believe that you listed, um, are projects that are, yeah, part of the Planning's Transportation, um, CIP. Um, those projects are all tied to future grant opportunities and abilities to combine funds. If you look in the CIP, you'll see, depending on which project it is, uh, some of them are looking at the Transportation Alternative Program. Some then also combine with private, uh, contributions, um, locally. Uh, the Yellow Jacket Trail actually combines, uh, Transportation Alternative, Montana Department of Transportation, uh, funds, like, uh, it combines a variety of things to, to complete those projects. So partly why you see most of them further out is because that's what has to get aligned up to be able to get that done. Um, and then you'll see some smaller amounts on a few projects where we're gonna do, and this was a conversation we had with council actually earlier this year, uh, to do some feasibility, some analysis to be able to determine, okay, what are the pieces that we need? If there are an easement, is there something that needs to be provided that then will facilitate the, the future?
So the question I have then, Wyeth, on these projects. These projects are projects that you're hoping you put in the tip and they're projects that you're hoping will get money. Will any of these, uh, these dollars go back to maintaining some of the trails we have in place?
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor and Council, so it's not, I, I guess you mentioned the tip. This is, so this is to, these are in the CIP and then we would look at Transportation Alternative Dollars, which is the TAP program, um, and then whether, you know, how those get identified for other funding. Um, in terms of maintenance, these are, this is specifically to construct them. And then the maintenance has to be, uh, determined separately. That can depend on, really, and it does depend on where these are located. So if you're located in right-of-way, that maintenance, um, is, would be different than potentially if it was located like in, uh, Alkali Creek Trail in the park. Then we would be in discussions with parks regarding maintenance. And we've, if you read in those, each of those CIP projects, that's, that's also described, like, what the maintenance would, would have to be and how we would address.
So the only money that you're looking at that would fund these are monies that can only go to trails?
The, so the projects potentially, no, so transportation alternatives as an example is, uh, focused on, you know, non-motorized, uh, landscape work in the right-of-way. It's, it's got some limitations. So yeah, I mean, TAP, these are the types of projects that that is set up to fund and that we've been successful in funding in the past. That's what you're, with the funding for Stagecoach Trail that's going on right now, that was, the majority of that was, all of it except for the local match, was Transportation Alternative Dollars. And that was a good fit for that program and for those, that funding. So yeah, in that case, yes, some of the other grants we would, that we would leverage here, like the Recreational Trails Program Grant, um, there's another Trail Stewardship Grant at the state level. Um, and then obviously if we were to secure matching or some matching funds from, uh, Billings Trailnet, then that's, those are other types of sources. So they're very specific to these types of pro- projects versus.
So are all these projects in the transportation projects, trail projects that you can use? Dollars from, that are matched either from Trailnet or, or federal dollars?
Are you, sorry, say that again? I didn't understand.
Are those, are the dollars in the transportation projects here? All dollars that would come from alternative transportation dollars? From federal dollars or state dollars? And none of them could be going back to, um, maintain some of the alternative routes such as trails that need to be maintained?
Uh, so, correct. The fund, these funds are for construction of these types of, uh, projects. Um, and that's, that's where they can go to. We have used in the past and actually recently, some of the, I believe it's the Recreational Trails Program, and I'd have to double-check with, um, with our transportation planner with Elise, but I know we've worked with parks on some, uh, like, maintenance or reconstruction of some, of some trails. So I think there's, there's some ability to do that in some cases, but it's, it's, um, you know, it's small, those are smaller amounts.
Thank you.
Councilmember, uh, Aspen Lander, Councilmember Neese, Councilmember Boyet?
So with these transportation projects and, and the reference to using the Transportation Alternative Dollars at a NDT. Um, when we voted on Stagecoach Trail, I think we had a pretty robust conversation about, all right, we're, we're funding Stagecoach Trail, but as we moved these things forward, I, I think we even took a vote on it as council and I'm looking for somebody else to, to nod or, or acknowledge that. We even voted to say, hey, as we go forward, we're gonna use these TA dollars to match safe routes to school. I, and, and we voted on that. That's, uh, actual council action. Um, that wasn't a unanimous vote, that's okay. Uh, but that was a council action and that was council directive to staff. Yeah, I'm a hundred percent positive. Yeah.
I think we would remember that if that were the conclusion.
I'll, I'll put a mo- motion forward if that's what we need to do, but I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent certain that that was the pretty explicit direction to, to staff. So I'm gonna start by, by noting that, that, I mean, the majority on this council said, hey, if we're gonna use TA dollars in the future, we're gonna do that to maximize our safe routes to school projects and leverage our local match, which we fund safe routes to school with, to extend and prioritize those projects, not new trails, not new connectors, not, none of this other stuff. We're gonna get safe routes to schools built. Secondly, we just talked about the Parks Department not building stuff that they can't maintain. We're gonna build Stagecoach Trail and we can't maintain that. And we know that, and we did it anyway. And we're gonna create a deficit for the Parks Department with Stagecoach Trail. And now we got a bunch more trails projects that another department is planning to put into the Parks Department budget to maintain that they can't maintain. And we've been talking about it for two years now that the parks can't maintain. But we continue to plan these things, knowing that we can't maintain them. And my frustration continues to grow with this stuff and the LRTP and the way that we just pretend like none of that stuff matters and that parks will just figure it out once it gets out of the planning department. It, it's the left hand not talking to the right hand and us not having the budget to actually maintain this stuff. But once it gets out of the planning department and the project gets built, it's not their problem anymore. But it's our problem now and it's the Parks Department's problem now. So we fill the LRTP with all of these projects that we can't fund. We disregard the council directive to say, hey, we want to focus on safe routes to school and, and knock that program out for our community because that's what's important to our constituents. And I don't know what else we have to do to stop doing this. And, and I'm increasingly frustrated that that just seems to fall on deaf ears. And so, I mean, if I need to make a motion to s- to knock all of this stuff out of the capital improvements plan, that's what I'll do. Because I don't know how to, how else to make it clear, uh, that we have priorities that we want to see as the governing body here. I, I don't know what else to do here, but this one frustrates the hell out of me.
Okay, um, I identified Councilmember Neese and Boyet.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Wyeth, on this transportation projects, twenty, total of twenty point three five, if you have million dollars, is that, is that real dollars or is that just hopeful money that we're gonna get from the federal government?
Uh, Councilmember Neese, Mayor and Council, those, as I said earlier, are based on, yeah, grants, uh, future grant opportunities, grant programs we know that exist. Uh, some state and federal dollars that we know exist, but yeah, it's, it's where you put those together to complete the project.
And, and we're successful in getting this type of money?
Well, we have been in the past. That's why we've built a, a lot of what you've been constructed over the last fifteen, twenty years.
Okay, thank you. I, uh, I agree with Councilmember Aspen Lander on this. I think all these projects are, are, we're gonna, even if we get the dollars from the federal government to do it, then we're not gonna have the option to maintain them. And, and, and some of these projects, um, I think are much more important. If I look at the, uh, Fifth Avenue Corridor and the Twenty-Fifth Street Bridge, right there's the thirteen point five million to fi- figure or build Twenty-first Street. And that's gonna be, have a huge impact on the south side and the safety of those people down there versus having, um, a, a Fifth Street Corridor Avenue, which is a great idea, but the railroad is never gonna give up the right-of-way there. And, and we need to stop pursuing something that we're, it's never gonna happen. Um, and the Twenty-Fifth Street Bridge, again, great concept, nice idea, but I don't think that's something that, in, and I know Twenty-first Street's off the CIP, but if we were to remove those two items, just keep that in mind, there's money there to do that, the Twenty-first Street in a, in an amount that, that would actually get, and again, once the study's over, we'll know exactly how much and we'll bring that back to you at that time. And maybe then we can change the CIP to bring that back in at that time. But I, I agree with you and I would vote in support of removing these projects from the CIP.
Uh, Councilmember Boyet? And then Chris and, uh, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember, okay, uh, Chris and Councilmember Shaw and Boyet.
So to Councilmember Aspen Lander's points, what I'd like to do is have the opportunity. So we're, we're scheduled to further talk about the capital improvement plan two weeks from tonight. You make very specific points and I know that we have significant projects in the safe routes to school, but I'm not prepared tonight here to point them all out to you. So I would suggest that one of the things we come back to you two weeks from now is to be very specific about what is in this plan relative to safe routes to schools. And ultimately, if these dollars are competing with any of that, ultimately put you in a position to either take them out of the CIP and say, stop working on that or understand where the funding is completely separate from. So I, that's, that's my thought, specific to safe routes to school and all the works that's gone down there, there in Public Works. Tonight, the intent was to give the high overview, answer some questions. Uh, Andy pointed out some very specific capital projects that we wanted some direction on, but we're also gonna, two weeks from tonight, get deeper into this, this topic. Sounds like one we definitely need to get deeper into. And I'd like the staff to have an opportunity to better prepare for that dialogue.
Very good. Councilmember Shaw?
Uh, thank you. I was gonna ask Debbie to come up and, um, talk more about safe routes to school because we've taken just so many votes on it, it's hard to remember going back exactly which votes have been taken. I think reviewing that history would be helpful. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with not eating up time doing that if staff is gonna come back in two weeks and there's not a motion tonight to just eliminate them.
And just a reminder, what we have before us is the CIP. So I know these relate to each other, but let's try to stick to the CIP as much as possible.
Right, that's, sorry, if I was being confusing, I'm saying I, as long as there's not a motion to remove them from the CIP tonight, I'm fine with waiting until Debbie comes back, when staff comes back with more information. I just, if we're gonna have a vote on it tonight, I would like to call Debbie up.
Okay. Okay, very good. Councilmember Gilak?
Um, gonna jump around a little bit, trying to address different, uh, points made. It's a little confusing because we do have two sections that are called transportation projects, so that, that adds to. Um, so yes, we have had this section that, of, of grant-funded ones purely for, as long as I've been in the council and I think long before because they are grant-driven and, but in order for you to get any of the grants, you gotta have them on a plan. Um, so I, I think, uh, it, it's an important point though that we can't just take the thing, these projects and apply them to the Twenty-first Street underpass because these kinds of projects are grant-specific. They have to be used for certain purposes, so, um, uh, I think it's, it's a worthy point that, that, uh, you know, we gotta be able to maintain these, uh, these, these, uh, projects. Um, it is worth pointing out that, that trails were, in the 2017 Parks Comp Plan, the single largest, um, uh, point of interest for the public, larger than large parks or small parks. This, this is something that the, the public is, is enjoying and using. Um, if you look at, um, the different businesses that are supporting the work of Billings Trailnet, I mean, it's kind of a who's who's of, of a lot of the businesses, uh, in the city. Um, and, but the point again about maintaining them is really important. And, and Trailnet heard that, so they funded, they, they secured the money that was needed for redoing the trail, uh, through Swords Park, uh, doing all the crack work. Uh, so there is, there are other ways, uh, beyond just the, uh, these capital funds for doing that. But I think it's a, it's a good point to be continuing to raise. I don't recall there being a vote. I do recall you making the, the point about, uh, money, uh, going towards, uh, just towards safe routes to school. I, I don't recall the vote. Maybe there was, I just don't recall it. Um, on the Fifth Avenue Corridor, um, when it was Montana Rail Link, they had finally gotten to the point that they were willing to have, uh, there'd been precedent. It actually happened in Missoula. We were finally, hallelujah, that we can actually work with them on that. Uh, and, and so it looked like we had some momentum and then, uh, ENSF took it back over and I guess things have been very challenging, uh, since then. It is a project that has the potential of really opening up a lot of, uh, quality mixed-use development that is in, in the E-Bird area and, and that tax base really increasing. So it'd be a really good investment if, if, uh, we were able to secure any kind of funding, but obviously it has to be the railroad that ultimately, we can't do it without the railroad being involved. So, uh, I don't see any harm in keeping it on the CIP though, um, so I would, uh, want to keep that on there. So, you know, in general, I'm, I'm, while hearing the concern about operations and I, you know, maintain them, it, it is really important. I, I think there's not a lot otherwise. No reason not to keep them on the. No reason not to keep them on the plan. These are, these are grant-funded projects, um, let's keep them in the CIP, if we get them, um, we can decide then if we wanna move forward.
Very good, Councilmember Boyet. And then Council will try to, try to some sort of conclusion.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the Fifth Avenue Corridor from the Transportation Project for the CIP.
Mayor.
Okay, uh, that's the motion, Councilmember Boyet, Councilmember Neese.
Yeah, so I was on the Zoning Commission for ten years, six years ago, so that's sixteen years. We were talking about the Fifth Avenue Corridor then, great idea, wonderful idea, but I think it doesn't go anywhere. It never went to the metro where it should've gone. If it went to the metro, I think this would've been a done deal. It stops. And the, uh, Montana Rail Link was good, I talked with them, and then the Burlington Northern came in and said, no, hell no. So, this thing has been on here for years and years and years. We're never going anywhere with it, it's a pipe dream, I think we should just remove it. If ever it comes back, we can always put it back. All this is a dream, this is a wish list. If we don't, if we find out something tomorrow, we can put it on the new wish. But at this point, let's just get rid of it, it's dead.
Councilmember Neese.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I agree with what was said here, and especially since it's switched from Montana Rail Link to Burlington Northern. That's one of the things that we talked about in the Twenty-First Street Oversight Committee there is, it is, it is very, very difficult to, to, uh, deal with them, and it's a very, very long, long process. And that's one of the things that we even considered, is they may not even approve what, the plan that we have, or what we wanna do on that bridge. And that's where, um, I think that this is just such a long shot now, and, and I think, before I supported this project, because I thought we had a shot at doing this, but I don't believe it anymore. And I think, I think as Councilmember Boyet said, if it comes back, if there's funds, you know, if, well, first of all, there's not really funds there for it anyway, but if it comes to the point where someone says, you know, they, everyone abandons the tracks and they wanna get rid of it, great, let's bring it back. But until that time, I think it's, it's, uh, it is a pipe dream. I, I think the redevelopment would be great, but it's not, I, I don't see it happening. I think we should focus other areas of reverb or redevelopment instead of the Fifth Street Corridor for now.
Okay, you've got a motion before you, uh, other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Rupes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would've supported it if it, if it was just move it to the future CIP projects, um, so that we can maintain visibility to it, and, you know, some interest in seeing it happen someday. Uh, but taking it off completely, I won't support.
Uh, okay, further discussion on the, on the motion? I'm in opposed motion, it's still a great project to get future funding, I think we need to keep it there. It is frustrating, uh, that we don't have a line of sight to do something, uh, or do more. Maybe that's just we haven't given it the, uh, effort it deserves, but, um, if this passes, maybe that'll light a fire under our community, so, it's not all bad. Um, other discussion? Is it, Wyatt?
So, Mayor and Council, I just wanna say two things, because before you make your decision, one is, and maybe there's a different way to do this in the CIP. I know you guys, we've talked about the CIP every year for many, 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 many years, and how we do it, and what's in it, and what's not in it. But, it is absolutely true, it is absolutely true, that if you take things out of this document, and you shelve the studies that you've done to get ready to do those projects, if a grant opportunity comes along, you are not prepared. And so if that's what you wanna do, then that is, then you're on the right track. But I will tell you that all the big projects that have gotten done, that have been on this list, when we go to apply for grants, when those opportunities come, and they're less and less, I'm not gonna, you know, we're not gonna sugarcoat that, but when you do that, you go to this document and you show the grant, the program, whoever you're applying to, that this community has it on this list and has made it some level of priority, and then there's other analysis that goes with it. So, I just want you to know that, because the record is years-long on how successful that has been, years. So, if we're gonna start taking them off and putting the shell, you know, shelving the studies, we did a, we're doing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar study on the Twenty-First Street Underpass that you all wanted us to do. That's fine, we'll put it on the shelf, we'll put it on the shelf, and we'll take it off of here, and we'll go do something else. That's fine, I just want you to know how this works, okay? Just want you to know, so, thanks.
Very good, Councilmember Aspenlyer.
I appreciate the lecture on that. Where I think you're wrong is, with the Fifth, uh, Street, with the Fifth Avenue Corridor, you also have to have the right of way, and you don't, and there's no line of sight in that. So, I appreciate your passion for your job, and if we were gonna take all of these things off, you got a point. But when we're talking about the Fifth Avenue Corridor, I don't need a lecture about how grant program works. I, and, and I don't need to be scared about, you know, you're, we're never gonna get this opportunity, and, and this is gonna come. We're never gonna get the right of way, and that's an important fact also in this conversation. So, thanks for the comment, but I don't need that in making this kind of discussion.
Is, is that, I, there's, there's like multiple segments, I don't know the, the, uh, the route well enough, but, uh, uh, it's not all BNSF, and, so, anyway, I, that's, that's a factual issue, I just don't know if that's true. But, um, okay, so, uh, big decision if, uh, unless you're absolutely certain of those facts, but anyway, um,
Isn't our new trail, can I just say two things? Isn't the trail along Highway Three one of those grants that we got tied to this? One of the absolute coolest projects we've done in the past seven to ten years? So, that, that's a very recent tangible one. I would tell you, in my five years in Kalispell, nobody believed that the railroad tracks were gonna come out of downtown. But you go to downtown Kalispell today, and one of the greatest things they have is the trail network that runs all the way through their corridor, connecting now down to Flathead Lake and some other areas. So, there, there are some long-term things that really are long plays, that go beyond decades sometimes. So, not to argue against it or for it, but there-
And I'll, I'll just comment, a lot of people on this, uh, uh, Council wanted to get rid of the Skyline Trail, uh, 'cause it had been on our heritage trail plan for years and years. Wyatt and I kept going to Washington DC, came back to the CIP, and ultimately, we were, we were successful. So, it is a long game, there's no doubt about it. I don't have a crystal ball. Um, further discussion, we do have a motion before us, um, further discussion before we vote. The motion is to, uh, remove the Fifth Avenue Corridor, uh, uh, trail set for fiscal year 2030. If in favor of the, uh, motion, uh, raise your hand, voting in favor. Our Councilmembers, uh, uh, Boyet, Neese, Tidswell, Rogers, Owen, Kennedy, and Aspenlyer. If voting in opposition to, uh, and in favor of keeping it, uh, in the T, uh, uh, those are, uh, Councilmembers Cole, Rupes, Gillick, Shaw, and that's it. So, the motion passes, uh, seven to four. Uh, Council, what else, uh, is on your list? Councilmember Rupes.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm not gonna make a motion. Andy, I'm gonna look at you, but I, I think I'm talking to Jennifer, who is inconveniently located back here, and I'll lose my mic. We have this slide in our presentation that says, um, the projected rate increases to support the projects that are in the Public Works CIP. And since we're on this kind of mode of talking about, you know, building things and having to maintain them, there's some, there's some costs here that I think add up to a lot of money over the next five years. And we try to, w- we, we say it's X percent per year, it's probably two hundred thousand dollars per percent per year, but they're cumulative over five years. And what I would like to see, if I could, I ask, and I'm asking, I think Jennifer through you, again, I can't talk out of the back of my head. Okay, is if, when we come to Budget Committee, could we have a breakdown of what that means at the end of five years? If we follow this, I, I, I know it's an estimate, uh, but if we follow this seven, and six, and six, and six at the end of five years, where are we today for the average payer for each of these things, and where will we be in five years?
So, just to clarify, you're looking for the impact to the median home?
Yeah, e- exactly, just an average, an average home, yeah, e- exactly. The average home, where are we today? And if we do this, seven, or thirteen, or seven and a half, five, whatever it is, over those five years? Whole lot of caveats there, and I get it, they're just total estimates, but just some line of sight to, to what those will add up to be.
Yeah, Jennifer's ready to do that, all right.
Okay, um, as long as we're talking about, uh, uh, maintenance, um, obviously, that's really important, but I, why don't we have, uh, all of our, uh, staff reports coming forward addressing those future maintenance issues? We've had the discussion about parks, we've had the discussion about trails. Those are nickels and dimes compared to, uh, uh, putting in streets. Shouldn't that be part of our DNA? I, I asked our Parks Director whether it was gonna cost ten thousand dollars to maintain a park a year. He couldn't answer the question. He didn't think that was unreasonable, or he didn't, he didn't say no to that. Um, and yet we make a boogeyman out of this maintenance issue with zero, zero data. And so, Councilmember Aspenlyer, you're getting tired of some things? I'm getting tired of that, being a boogeyman. We're gonna make decisions based on the cost of maintenance, let's have data to actually justify that. I don't know how we get that, but we don't have it now, but we're making very big decisions with absolutely no basis, in fact.
Where's our cost of service study?
We decided not to do it, 'cause we've kicked it down the road for eight years. Or at least, that's, that's my view, we have decided not to do it, 'cause we haven't had the staff, the staff, and we haven't, uh, we haven't invested in our Planning Department to come up with staff, uh, or consultants, 'cause you probably need consultants for that. And that would be an element, that was not the whole part of it, that would be a, an element, sure. Okay, Council, what else? Again, we don't really have a pattern of going department by department, or, um, uh, Andy did identify certain, uh, big things, we dealt with some of them, Twenty-First Street, Wood Park, Evidence Center. And, so you're, we covered your main items, okay? We technically had public comment, but, but, but you're saying you would like to reopen the public comment? So reopen the public comment? Um, I, I'm, I, I'm not opposed to that, Council, this is an opportunity to do that. Uh, I, I'll, I'll do that at the, at Mr. Boyet's request, if there's not opposition. Okay, and it'll be fairly quick. I, I think it's just, the, the question is with, 'cause we, we had a conversation or public comment early on, we've had discussion afterwards, it's kind of disjointed. So, is there any other public comment on any, uh, anything else? Don't repeat yourself, but, uh, we'll give you an opportunity, public, uh, special grace period. Is there any other public comment?
Hi again, uh, Kristy Halderman, sixteen twenty-three Stony Meadow. Speaking on behalf of Trails, just, uh, recently returned from a really, um, informative conference, and maintenance was brought up a lot. I do agree that, um, getting that data and knowing how much those maintenance costs will help all of us to, uh, continue and improve that trail system. Again, a lot of the feedback that I got, um, from a recent community-wide survey is just people are, they do love trails, they are safe routes to school, they are important to our community, they bring here, they keep people here, they make people wanna raise their families here, so they are really good for talent, um, attraction and retention. The other thing is that we discussed, um, how much, when, when we talk about trails and safety and active transportation, how much is a, a life worth? If we're thinking about kids getting to school safely, we're thinking about, um, people traveling, active transportation on trails, what, how do we put a dollar amount on a life and safety of that person in our community? I do really think that, I, I hope that we continue this conversation, um, that we continue talking about these projects and building out our system, our trail system, and, uh, keeping our community safe, so, that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other public comment? No one is coming forward, so we'll close that opportunity again, but, uh, thank you, Councilmember Boyet. Uh, back to Council, anything else? This is just a work sessions, and we'll have, uh, just to clarify, uh, Chris and, uh, Andy, what would the next work session look like? Uh, we'd get a new version based on these changes, can you comment?
Yeah, my intention would be to incorporate these changes into Proposed Version Two, as well as have a, an additional discussion with Budget and Finance Committee, perhaps some more information comes from that, and I think Chris wants to, I took a note here, chat about the, uh, Transportation Projects, the Planning and Transportation-
I'd just like to point out specifically what the Safe Routes to School projects that are in the capital plan, 'cause I believe there are, but let's, let's have, we'll have, we'll be prepared to have that discussion, as well as, I can't, I, I wouldn't argue at all, it isn't only Public Works that has maintenance needs relative to in, when you maintain, that you extend the life, uh, and they're better investments. So, that challenge of figuring out how to do that for miles of trails and other capital things that we have is something we need to lean into. And I'll remind folks, we are, you know, we, we've had a fair amount of turnover in, uh, leadership in our Parks Department. I'm confident we have the right leader right now to get us where we need to be, but you can't, you're not gonna get there, you know, in weeks, or even in just months. Uh, our community has struggled with this issue for decades, and we need to lean hard into it. This future Council is gonna find out pretty early, you know, we're gonna build a safe community, and that everybody's committed to having a safe community, it isn't just police officers on the street. So, us figuring out, uh, these funding components, maintenance is not just, though it's simpler for me, it is much simpler to talk about miles of pipe under the ground, one to five dollars for street maintenance. We do have those same kind of things we need to be able to produce on parks and other capital facilities that we have, like this one we're in right now. Thank you.
Very good, uh, Council, anything that you wanna direct staff for our next meeting that, uh, is your, your opportunity? Before we call this a, a wrap on item number three? Okay, no, Councilmember Shaw?
Do have one thing, which is, I, I guess I would encourage, potentially with some of these larger projects, have staff have just some kind of a little overview of when these were, when the planning began. I think Fifth Avenue Corridor is a great example of what is the history of that project? When did planning begin, how much money has been spent? If that information is not too hard to pull up, I think it would be helpful for our discussion.
Very good, um, okay, we'll, uh, we'll call that good on item number three. Highlight upcoming agenda items, Chris.
So, I'm just gonna hit work sessions, uh, so two weeks from tonight, you've got the Energy and Conservation Commission, because that entity, uh, or that group is set to sunset as part of, they, they have an annual report back to you guys, and I think we're getting, getting to the end of the life of that group from the last resolution that created them. So, that's in front of you in a couple of weeks. The ERP, Equipment Replacement Plan, uh, that's critical. And then, uh, follow-up to the Capital Improvement Plan discussion, as well as, I think the Operations Committee is gonna start talking about possibly Article two dash two hundred in the municipal code. So, those, that's tentative. Some, uh, December one work sessions loaded up, uh, Rimrock Road thirty percent design, pretty important. Stagecoach Trail update, pretty critical. Redevelopment opportunities at eight oh two Yellowstone. And, uh, our traffic study and our traffic access noise aggressive driving conversation. So, those, and ultimately, an adoption of some five hundred million dollars in CIP are, are huge issues before we wrap out this calendar year. Thank you.
Very good, uh, question, Councilmember Kenny?
Chris, on the redevelopment of eight oh two Yellowstone, it would be real nice, who's working on that? To let Councilwoman Rogers and myself, um, be part of that discussion before it comes out here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, very good, uh, any items of general Council discussion? Then, is there any public comment on non-agenda items, things that were not on our agenda tonight? Your patience, by the way.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Strong, and I live at four eleven Glen Drive in Ward Three. I'm married to a Billings native. I'm married to a Billings native, the mother of three daughters, and have enjoyed living in the magic city for almost 17 years. I first want to compliment you on your efforts to improve safety here in Billings. While it still has room to improve, I was just looking at those statistics today and realized that things have been improving. So congratulations on that. We'll take the little, the little improvements. In spite of the unrest around the country, I hope that Billings can keep that positive momentum going. Now, here's for the part you might not appreciate. We are all very interested to see what will be the outcome of tomorrow's election. The word has gotten around that should certain candidates take office, they are expected to propose yet another nondiscrimination ordinance. I am here to speak to that in advance. I spent a lot of hours in the courtroom back in 2014 defending against the first one, and I'm more than prepared to do it again. Arguments were raised in the previous attempts that such an ordinance is necessary to make Billings a welcoming city. However, considering the huge influx of people continuing to move into Billings and the surrounding areas, it is pretty clear that people are feeling quite welcome here. As you all know, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 outlawed discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, and national origin. An NDO would be redundant and infringe upon citizens' freedom of association. Billings is full of outstanding and welcoming individuals, establishments, and businesses, and has no need to virtue signal to earn unnecessary political points. Somewhat to the contrary, I would like to suggest that an ordinance be proposed which would establish protections for the single-sex spaces that belong to women's and, women and girls. For the purpose of clarity, I will define a woman as an adult human female, a girl is a juvenile human female, and a man is an adult human female. Biological sex is not just a suggestion. Most foundational women's rights laws were enacted with women, woman, meaning biological female, because they were created in response to material and biological realities, such as pregnancy, reproductive vulnerability, economic vulnerability, and male violence. At this time in Billings, it is very possible to enter a single-sex women's space and find an intact male body in there, as I have at the restrooms of both a local gym and a retail store. Trans rights activists would tell us that we need to protect men who self-identify as women, that in order to help them feel safe, they should be allowed to use spaces that are clearly designated as women's-only spaces. That is not our responsibility. Our foremothers fought to ensure single-sex spaces, including but not limited to restrooms, locker rooms, prisons, and sports teams. These places were not created to be safe spaces for women's feelings or ideologies, but rather to be safe spaces for our female bodies. Regardless of how much money men spend on drugs or plastic surgery to disguise their secondary sex characteristics, it does not buy them access into women's and girls' single-sex spaces or sports. I would hope that you women of our city council are in favor of protecting our single-sex women's spaces. However, the fact is that the majority of you council members are men, and many of you will continue on the council in the coming years. Most of you are probably husbands, your fathers, brothers, employers, and friends, you're certainly, at least all sons, who care deeply about the safety and well-being of the women and girls in your lives. Sadly, the social contagion continues, and there seems to be an increasing number of men who are uncomfortable with the physical reality of their bodies, and struggling...
Jennifer, just wrap up.
I'm almost done. With the reality of their identity. Whatever the mental health issues these men may have, the rest of the world is not compelled to be a part of their treatment plan. We owe them no validation, affirmation, or recognition of their identity claims. The stakes are high. I implore you to protect and defend the single-sex spaces of women and girls in the city of Billings. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you. Any other public comment on items not on our agenda tonight? Okay. That's allowed, as long as you do it quickly. Very good. Any other public comment on items not on our agenda? No one's coming forward, so we'll close the public comment period, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.